A few days ago, I heard that a judge recused himself from a court case because of interference by two people. This means he's no longer interested in hearing the case and has requested that another judge deal with that case. I mean, did I hear correctly? A judge making the decision that he will no longer hear a case because of what two people said and did? The court does not spell out that this interference was political, but one might assume that it was based on the people involved in the case. One was a politician and two were political appointees. So for all intents and purposes, if politicians or politically appointed people because of their actions have caused a judge to recuse himself from a case, to me, this boils down to political interference. This is very concerning and should concern every citizen of this island. So let's take a look at what transpired based on a signed order from the High Court dated July 28, 2023. This court order cites a case which was brought by the Honorable Alan Chasney in his personal capacity and in his capacity as a parliamentary representative for Miko South against the Speaker of the House of Assembly and the Attorney General for Saint Lucia. What I understand from the court order is that two of the people named in the case, and they are known as litigants, made contact with the Office of the Registrar of the High Court to inquire as to the reason for the timing of the application for interim injunction that had been made by the Honorable Alan Chasney. Remember, they had tried to prevent the Honorable Chasney from being anywhere near the Parliament building and he took them to court? Well, these litigants went to the Registrar to make the inquiries on the same day of the hearing of the injunction. Added to that, correspondence put into the case was given to the Registrar of the High Court by one of the parties named in the proceedings for the attention of the judge, but wait for it, it was not given by the lawyers representing the parties. What? Correspondence was sent to the judge by someone who was one of the parties in the case? I have only seen this in mafia movies. This correspondence was copied to Alan Chasney as political leader of the United Workers' Party and also to the General Secretary of the United Workers' Party, who was not even part of the case. The court order described this as extremely egregious. And guess what? The lawyers involved in the case were not even copied on the correspondence. The court order mentions the term "extremely egregious." You know what this means, Saint Lucia? Egregious describes something that is remarkably and conspicuously bad, offensive or shocking. Samin, sa yo fea, pli movie pasi movie, ini tell ma maledis yo, sa feh judge la kuwi. This is scary. I am calling on the Bar Association to clear the air on this matter because I need clarity on what this statement by a court could mean. What was done by these people who interfered with the court procedure was so bad, so offensive, so shocking, that a judge who was originally hearing the case does not want to have anything more to do with the case? I need to ask the question, has there ever been a court case where there was interference by people who deemed themselves to be important and we were not made aware? Whether they be politicians or politically exposed people? Think about this. If you have a case in court, political interference could play a role, probably to the detriment of your case. This is scary. And the fact that a court could publicly reveal that a judge does not want to hear a case because of the behaviors of two litigants is not just scary, it is extremely serious. We as Saint Lucians have to be concerned about this. One of the things you should know is that whether you are a politician or you are close to a politician or you have close ties to politicians or believe you're important or in a prominent position or you are self-proclaimed judge, sa pa apye, you cannot interfere in the working of the judiciary. In fact, politicians are obligated to keep their hands off the judiciary, much less, si ti akoli kyo. Saint Lucia, I do not care which political party you support. How would you feel if you had a matter in court and some people who do not like you try to use their influence because of their positions to interfere with the case? How would you feel? Trust me, Saint Lucia, we are now aware that the behaviors of two people involved in the case brought by the Member of Parliament for Miko South against the Speaker of the House and the Attorney General of Saint Lucia have been described as extremely egregious. To remind you, this means these behaviors were deemed by a court to be conspicuously bad, shocking and offensive. My question again is, can we be reassured that such interference has not been tried in other cases? As I said earlier, this is scary. So politicians and those close to them who believe that they can sue the outcome of court cases by interfering with the judicial process need to be reminded to keep their hands off.
Okay, we are going to start with the National Anthem and immediately we'll remain standing and proceed into the prayer.
Let us pray. Those who are Catholic, can you please sign yourselves? Heavenly Father, we thank you, we praise you, we bless you. We thank you for this day because this is the day the Lord has made and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for the gathering this afternoon, Lord, as we have gathered here in the tongue of Soufret. We thank you for your many blessings and the safe journey and mercies you've given us to get here safely. We pray, Heavenly Father, that as we're about to go into the deliberations of our meeting, that you will take full control. We ask, Heavenly Father, that your spirit will be among us and that every single person viewing this broadcast and also persons who are here will leave this place feeling blessed and our message will resound with the people of Saint Lucia. I ask that you bless every speaker, Heavenly Father, that you will give them wisdom, a sound mind and whatever it is that they will be presenting today, Heavenly Father, it will be for the benefit of our country and the benefit of our people. Take full control of the rest of this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Charles. And Father, we pray that you save our country that is in trouble. Ladies and gentlemen, Saint Lucia is in trouble. Pe iya tuaka. The United Workers' Party is here to the rescue. And before we proceed, I would like to introduce the head table. To my far left, we have the Chairman of the Soufret constituency branch and the Chairperson of chairpersons, Mr. Angus. We have Mrs. Beryl George, our Elections Officer. Senator Harold Stanley-Slossy, a former parliamentary representative and future parliamentary representative. The first Deputy Political Leader of the United Workers' Party, former parliamentary representative for Castries Southeast, Mr. Guy Joseph. The second Deputy Political Leader of the United Workers' Party, former representative for Ansley and Canrey, Senator Dominic Ferry. Our Mobilization Officer, Mrs. Nancy Charles. Our General Secretary, Mrs. Janine Girodi McIntyre. Ladies and gentlemen, our former Prime Minister, our future Prime Minister, our political leader and leader of the opposition, the Honorable Alan Michael Chasney. And I know, and I know our political leader has a special relationship with Soufret. And of course, I know you too, just like the rest of Saint Lucia, are looking forward to his return as our Prime Minister here in Saint Lucia. Ah, you're the moment we introduce, come on. Well, my son, my son, you got more shy vibe. But shy liberty, we got to don't they good at me. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, I will be your Master of Ceremonies, the P R O of the United Workers' Party, Leonard Swaydhamontut. I would like to inform those who are here and those who are listening to us on live stream that you can always visit our website, uwpcandluja.com to get information on what is happening in the United Workers' Party, the plans that we have and all other information that you wish to get. Very importantly as well, you can use that forum to make a contribution to your party that will go a long way in helping save your country. Ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, we would like to get the ball rolling immediately with the presentations. And now I would like to call on Miss Lysia Vijay to give the welcome remarks. Oh, sorry, the Chairman himself, the Chairman of the Soufret constituency branch will be delivering the welcome remarks.
Good evening. Whilst protocol has been established, I would like to show my appreciation and I would like you as well to show your appreciation to the head table by putting our hands together. Members of this audience, both live here and via the net, well-wishers, party members here and abroad, all friends of the United Workers' Party, all those who are about to think of and not sure what to do as to coming back home and getting involved with the United Workers' Party, all Saint Lucians who are patriotic, who willing and understand our national anthem. Let me welcome you to Soufret-Français-Jacques today at our town hall meeting. We have waited eagerly for our turn for this venture to bring awareness to all the necessities that highlight the lack of governance of this wicked S L P regime, which is a friend of discrimination, a friend of inflation, a friend to corruption, a friend to criminalization and a friend to heavy ruralization, whatever that means. I want you to listen to the facts today. So when you go home and you go out to your families and throughout your community, you start to spread the awareness for our sake, for your children's sake, for Soufret's sake, for Canrey's sake, for Labrin's sake, for the sake by extension of the O E C S. As to the way we see Philippe Pierre does not know if he look in front or behind. I will always follow the Master of Ceremony and say that, Saint Lucia, we are in trouble. Today, I want to bring to your attention the need for awareness and necessity for continued structure of the U W P and the determination to address this emergency situation that Saint Lucia is... What? Can I hear you? In this regard, I am reminded even more that my role as Chairman is to ensure that the Soufret-Français-Jacques seat is won and forms part of the return of Alan Chasney to the helm, to steer the ship back in the right direction, to fill the harbor with at least seven cruise ships that is only in our memory to us, to ease the burden of this tidal wave of 2.5% to continue the south development projects, to give us our hospital with a heliport, to enhance our healthcare benefits, to bring back the lost airline flights, to provide legitimate but not hypocritical means for farmers, small businesses and school graduates to attract investment, to walk with his white look-alike skin through the corridors of Washington, London, France, Germany, the Americas and the Caribbean, Asia, to represent us and bring livelihood back to this country. Because he is already familiar with this. Unlike those who are only able to travel on a plane to get a hotel room only when they find themselves in government. This man has been traveling the world from the time he came on this hoof. That is why he is able to distinguish and try to explain to Philippe Pierre what it is meant by an airport having an upper level, a departure and arrival level. That is why Philippe Pierre cannot understand that he needs a heliport. That is why he cannot understand the little storehouses cannot be a hospital. And with, I don't wish him bad luck, but I pray to God that one day he don't fall a sick overseas and have to go to a big box hospital overseas for treatment. By the way, have you realized that when U W P is not in office, all of former candidates are involved in something industrious? You will have, let me see, Migay, si he in office, he can drive a tractor, he can put everything. Harold is running his business. Parote, Poubos Lamien. Mr. Chasney. Everybody there is occupied. They boy, they boy, you're in office, you like a yoga dummy. They boy, you're in office, you're pan testo, I got a fee. Selai yo sa travail, ze si yo vini kwenemun. Masip ek feh man change, ek tap e koye of kouwa. Meno ka vini pou yo. Meno ka vini pou yo. Eh? Ou jasav? I would, I can go on, but I would appeal to all my chairpersons to assist me and our branches to bring our seats back home. And to do that, we must recognize that we as chairpersons are fortunate to pursue and we should pursue and conduct ourselves with the right political argument to lead our branches, to support our candidates, to keep ourselves in one format so that victory can be ours. As our party is now moving into third gear and we are about to press the cruise control button to victory, even if it is an early election, forced by the inability to borrow money like before, history can repeat itself. But we must have the right dedication, commitment. We must be unified as we have realized, as many are willing to come forward and join us and realizing that the mistake that was done. And as we move with one principle, under one leader and slowly recognize our faults and continue to trample on our faults so that we get it out of the way. We need not give any of our talents and political investments into bringing down each other, talking about each other. Bread has the same taste in every mouth and when it is our bread and butter and manner must come down, we must stick together. Forget any ill feelings there is against one another. The U W P carries one symbol, the torch. And that torch is only carried by the hand. Let us put these hands together across Saint Lucia like the late Lanzico said and carry this torch home. Criticism, maliciousness, finger pointing, individualism, this has no place in U W P. I urge everyone, before you engage your thoughts, when you engage your political thoughts, before you release your viewpoints, your strategy, engage your political maturity. Think and analyze. The party is one unit, one principle, one brain, one policy, one step forward. That's the only way we will succeed. I want to close. I want to close, yeah. I want to close to express my bruto also endorse. Is the motioning, I realize the falsehood and together with me, the rest of Saint Lucia is starting to realize what went on. And we must, we must start to stand up and support and throw our weight behind this man to eliminate, eliminate all the bad stories, the bad omen that they tried to cast on him. Because more and more, we are starting to see all the faults were not there. And we are starting to see the evidence that they started with a lie and they have to continue lying to the nation. And I want to say again, I want to say one more thing and I want to vouch, as I wrap up, that this political leader we have there, I have seen him as a man with a listening ear and this listening ear grows wider and wider. With this, I want to tell you, please, let us put our act together, let us put ourselves together and stand firm with our leader and raise him up in the air. When our leader goes up, when our leader goes up, Saint Lucia goes up. When our leader goes up, Soufret goes up. As you can see, the way under his leadership, Harold Stanley's class, Saint Soufret, ride up. With this, I say, good night. And remember, Saint Lucia is in? I thank you.
Pe iya tuaka, mercy. Saint Lucia is in trouble. We are just getting ready to show you, to give you a little presentation, a commentary by Mrs. Jacinta Anius. And you know, it is actually about the level of interference we have on the part of our government in all aspects of life here in Saint Lucia. Now, they have tried all kinds of things, you know, to get at our political leader. And of course, when they feel that they have all the power, he has found other avenues, other routes, okay, to bring about justice and to let them know their place. As you are aware, he has taken them to the courts on several occasions and has warned them. There are a number of outstanding court cases and we know what the outcome is going to be. However, Jacinta will make a commentary on a recent development in one of those matters. So I ask of you to listen patiently for just a few minutes as we bring you up to date with what exactly is happening in your country, why we are in trouble like we are.
A few days ago, I heard that a judge recused himself from a court case because of interference by two people. This means he's no longer interested in hearing the case and has requested that another judge deal with that case. I mean, did I hear correctly? A judge making the decision that he will no longer hear a case because of what two people said and did? The court does not spell out that this interference was political, but one might assume that it was based on the people involved in the case. One was a politician and two were political appointees. So for all intents and purposes, if politicians are politically appointed people because of their actions have caused a judge to recuse himself from a case, to me, this boils down to political interference. This is very concerning and should concern every citizen of this island. So let's take a look at what transpired based on a signed order from the High Court dated July 28, 2023. This court order cites a case which was brought by the Honorable Alan Chasney in his personal capacity and in his capacity as a parliamentary representative for Miko South against the Speaker of the House of Assembly and the Attorney General for Saint Lucia. What I understand from the court order is that two of the people named in the case and they are known as litigants made contact with the Office of the Registrar of the High Court to inquire as to the reason for the timing of the application for interim injunction that had been made by the Honorable Alan Chasney. Remember, they had tried to prevent the Honorable Chasney from being anywhere near the Parliament building and he took them to court? Well, these litigants went to the Registrar to make the inquiries on the same day of the hearing of the injunction. Added to that, correspondence put into the case was given to the Registrar of the High Court by one of the parties named in the proceedings for the attention of the judge, but wait for it, it was not given by the lawyers representing the parties. What? Correspondence was sent to the judge by someone who was one of the parties in the case? I have only seen this in mafia movies. This correspondence was copied to Alan Chasney as political leader of the United Workers' Party and also to the General Secretary of the United Workers' Party, who was not even part of the case. The court order described this as extremely egregious. And guess what? The lawyers involved in the case were not even copied on the correspondence. The court order mentions the term "extremely egregious." You know what this means, Saint Lucia? Egregious describes something that is remarkably and conspicuously bad, offensive or shocking. Samin, sa yo fea, pli movie pasi movie, ini tell ma maledis yo, sa feh judge la kuwi. This is scary. I am calling on the Bar Association. I am calling on the Bar Association to clear the air on this matter because I need clarity on what this statement by a court could mean. What was done by these people who interfered if the court procedure was so bad, so offensive, so shocking that a judge who was originally hearing the case does not want to have anything more to do with the case? I need to ask the question, has there ever been a court case where there was interference by people who deemed themselves to be important and we were not made aware? Whether they be politicians or politically exposed people? Think about this. If you have a case in court, political interference could play a role, probably to the detriment of your case. This is scary. And the fact that a court could publicly reveal that a judge does not want to hear a case because of the behaviors of two litigants is not just scary, it is extremely serious. We as Saint Lucians have to be concerned about this. One of the things you should know is that whether you are a politician or you are close to a politician or you have close ties to politicians or believe you're important or in a prominent position or you are self-proclaimed judge sans papier, you cannot interfere in the working of the judiciary. In fact, politicians are obligated to keep their hands off the judiciary, much less sit here and lick you. Saint Lucia, I do not care which political party you support. How would you feel if you had a matter in court and some people who do not like you try to use their influence because of their positions to interfere with the case? How would you feel? Trust me, Saint Lucia. We are now aware that the behaviors of two people involved in the case brought by the Member of Parliament for Miko South against the Speaker of the House and Attorney General of Saint Lucia have been described as extremely egregious. To remind you, this means these behaviors were deemed by a court to be conspicuously bad, shocking and offensive. My question again is, can we be reassured that such interference has not been tried in other cases? As I said earlier, this is scary. So politicians and those close to them who believe that they can sue the outcome of court cases by interfering with the judicial process need to be reminded to keep their hands off. That's not them.
Who has shone some light on the blight that Saint Lucia is facing with the Saint Lucia Labour Party? Interference at the highest level. I am not surprised. We must remember that there was this case where the Prime Minister himself, no less, and his Attorney General went to the courthouse and said to the media that they had gone there to make sure that justice is being served. May I remind or inform the Prime Minister and his Attorney General that we have separation of powers in our democracy? They are part of the executive and they should not interfere with the judiciary. And when you see that begins to happen, you know Saint Lucia is in trouble. Now, I suspect some of you don't really believe me when I say Saint Lucia is in trouble. Get your phone out because I'm not the only customer of Digicel in this room here. And every customer of Digicel probably got that love letter that I got. I want to read something to you. Like every other company in Saint Lucia, we are facing the impact of increased cost of doing business as a result of your government of Saint Lucia recent implementation of a health and citizen security levy of 2.5% on goods at the port of entry and 2.5% on the market services. Now, that is a tax that they have put on us, the government of Saint Lucia. Now hear that. The levy, that is the tax, is applicable across entire range of digital products and services. So 2.5% for products, 2.5% for... So let me go do 2.5%. 2.5% like a multi-plie, café petit, by the time it gets to you. So hear that. 2.5%, the levy which I said is a tax is applicable across the entire range of digital products and services. And as such, we wish to advise that you can expect to see a 2.5% increase in your monthly subscription and an additional 2.5% government tax applicable to your service as of October 8th. So point it on. So who can buy a game in May, a game in a movie? So let me just tell you. I, for example, I have an account where I I am paying $165 a month come October 8th. Because of that additional tax that the government has put, they're going to charge me 2.5% for the products, 2.5% for the service. It is going to rise from $165 to $174. That is on top of bread, on top of gas, on top of groceries, on top of school books, on top of everything else that we already have to pay through our noses. People, this country is in trouble. Now, listen to this. KFC, that is Kentucky Fried Chicken, would like to inform its valued customers that as a result of the health and security levy, that is the tax introduced by government of Saint Lucia, as well as the continued rise in the cost of inputs, KFC has found it necessary to implement price increases in menu items. And that has been happening from the 4th of September this year. Now, brace yourself. Those companies who have the courtesy, you'll be getting more of those letters. Increase, price increase on you. Saint Lucia is in trouble. Ladies and gentlemen, to talk about the trouble that we are experiencing in Saint Lucia, I will call on the next speaker. Because you may think it's just groceries, you may think it's just the price of gas, you may just think it's the price of bread, but many of you here have children who go to school. Let us look at the situation with education in this country today. Since this government, the SLB government, has taken over. I would like to call on someone, an educator herself, who is intimately familiar with what is going on, to speak to you on that matter. And she will also touch on the issue of agriculture. Because when we talk about increasing prices, le wale ache fertilizer, 2.5%. Le wale ache amabag buspre, 2.5%. Every input that you have to use for agriculture today, the price has gone up. And I'm not sure that the price of our goods have gone up. But and of course, the farmer may decide to bring it up and pass it on. And guess who is going to pay for it? You. So ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call Doctor, thank you very much, Doctor Phara Polius, who will address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mama ifla bo! C'est licieux, antwoaka. We are in trouble. And let me tell you something. You know Bob Marley's song, of course. They can fool the people sometimes, but they can fool all the people all the time. We've seen the light. Let us stand up for what is right in this country. We need to stand up. You know, we have led here both swear put out mama ifla bo kia soufou ye. Both swear mama ifla bo! And all those who are watching us on the live stream, we want to say a pleasant day to you. And all those who have traveled from near and far, who were here with us. Mama ifla bo, we need to stand as an army. We need to stand and regain Saint Lucia because it belongs to all of us. We need to take control of what is ours. Yes. So I know. And by now, all Saint Lucians, they have made it abundantly clear. Et qui a dit tous les jours ça? They have regretted giving the Labour Party a chance. They regret the risk they took. A risk that has caused them nothing but embarrassment, disgruntlement, victimization, a 2.5 tax on the backs of Saint Lucians and a sense of hopelessness in this country. Passa yote di. This is the refrain you hear everywhere in this country. The length and breadth of Saint Lucia. Passa yote di nou. But I'll tell you something. You know what's most revealing, mama ifla bo? Some of the very own supporters. They cannot hold it any longer. They don't have a choice, you know? They have to wear their hat on their sleeves. Et vous savez ça, ça a ledi? Chez yo t'as ma plé? Il peut exploder, yo n'y peux pas. And they are talking and they have a lot to say. So we ought to listen. Mama ifla bo, I have newsflash for you today. Qui ça? Haven't you heard? Ou pourquoi tant ça? Administration, Labour Party, ni quinze ministres agricole. They have fifteen ministers of agriculture. And you want to know how? Just listen and I will tell you how. In August last year, Morocco donated almost 4,000 bags of fertilizer to Saint Lucia. To be exact, 3,924 bags of fertilizer. And the farmers were supposed to receive these bags of fertilizer free of charge. Given that the price of inputs has gone up and given that, you know, many farmers experience problems with soil fertility. Yoka di, tera paka podui, il ne t'aime pas, bagayadi da, il k'apeshé, um, dawaya. Il k'apeshé figla, il k'apeshé ces crops là, fè. Podey an chay. So Morocco donated these bags of fertilizer as a relief package to Saint Lucian farmers. And you know the Minister, Honorable Prosper?
What's his first name?
Alfred Prosper, sorry about that. You know, he said that these fertilizer bags would be distributed to the farmers, to the local farmers, free of charge. Mister Minister, we have low puté, we have way power la ba. We want you, the Minister of Agriculture, Honorable Alfred Prosper, we want you to tell us what happened to the 3,942 bags of fertilizer that was stored in the warehouse in Lacai, January? We want to know what happened to these bags of fertilizer. Since when? Où t'es bien? Since when constituency offices of some ministers of cabinet have become mini warehouses? And a collection point for fertilizer by farmers? Apweza, farmer, n'y peux aller, a constituency office, c'est district rep, la pioza, jwén, qui ça?
Not true.
Guano? Kati papi show sa, kika feta pi, c'est licieux. We are in trouble. We are in trouble. And since when do we pick and choose farmers to receive fertilizer to boost crop production? Since when? Mama ifla bo, mama c'est licieux. Farming is in serious trouble. Under a United Workers' Party administration, all farmers receive fertilizer, blue, red, green, yellow, black, white, everyone. And they all receive fertilizer at one location. So why should we play cheap politics with the people who are directly responsible for food production in this country? Why should we play the political game? And yet this government, this SLP administration is talking about food security? Food security? Today, we see a Labour Party playing politics with our food production. We see a Labour Party with fifteen ministers of agriculture. Each minister taking responsibility for the collection and distribution of fertilizer to farmers they know supported them.
Not good, not good, not good.
Ou ékui kote, nou kala? Do you see where we are heading? And it's not in a good place. In January North, for example, the farmers want to know the farmers want to know why a quantity of fertilizer was collected from the warehouse in Lacai, January and taken to the office of the district rep? Ek pas la pateni assele, il mene agadet Lacai, Lacai yo sipote, Labour Party. Why does that have to happen? For as long as I live in Gardett, I don't know there to be any warehouse. Magi bese af garret, ni pia soubehouse? And when farmers wanted chemicals, when farmers wanted fertilizer and other inputs for the crops under a UWP administration, where did they go to? The reception depot at Lacai. C'est la yoko net poua la? Our farming is, our farmers are in trouble. And the farming sector is in trouble too. Saint Lucia is in trouble. So I want to say to the district rep, the Prime Minister and the Minister responsible for agriculture, where is the transparency and the equity in the distribution of these bags of fertilizer? Where is it? Why politicize a sector that is so critical to the survival of the people of this country? We have questions we need answered. We have questions, we need answers. And as Saint Lucians, we need to stand up for what is right in this country. So after you have done all your distribution, you gave your supporters bags of fertiliser free of charge. The poor farmers, UWP farmers are asking for fertiliser just to be told that they are for Labour supporters. And you want to say to these farmers, they can now buy NFTs fertiliser a specific quota at $47 a bag. And anything above that quota, they have to pay $69. That's ludicrous. This is embarrassing and shameful. Where is our minister? The minister responsible for agriculture? You have fooled the farmers. Made them believe that they were going to get milk and honey. This foolishness needs to stop in Saint Lucia. And in January North, I want to say to the district rep, Honourable Sean Edward. This needs to stop. And the farmers want you to give them what is rightfully theirs. Give it to them. And don't select people to receive fertiliser. We're talking about food production. We are going to make sure the United Workers' Party will make sure that this does not happen. We are going to take control of Saint Lucia again. And we are putting them on notice. We are letting them know that. They will tell you. They promised the farmers $750 per acre. But how do you win? You buy your 550, mais ça qui joue $300. Ça qui joue un check $250. This is an insult to the farmers. And you know what? I want you to assess the situation yourself. And you are going to ask, answer a question that I'm going to ask you in a bit. Under a UWP administration, all registered farmers receive two rounds of the same fertiliser from Morocco. Free of charge. They received two rounds of spraying oil. And they received $800 per acre. I don't win 5,000, I don't win 10,000, I don't win 1,000, 2,000. So even in this little thing, the assistance that they received, Labour Party played its politics. Penalising the farmers of Saint Lucia because of their political affiliation. So we've learned a lot. I'm shifting gears a bit. I'm moving to education. As for education and the reopening of schools, aye, aye, aye. Disaster. Disaster. Preparation for the reopening of school, I give the Minister of Education, Honourable Sean Edward, a big S. I give him a big S. You have failed the education system. You have failed the Principals' Association. You have failed the parents of this country. You have failed them. So schools reopen for the new academic year on Monday, September 4th, with so much confusion and chaos. Some schools had no furniture. Principals complained that they had not received facilities fees. Some schools had no supplies for school feeding programmes. Some schools, even today, are still under repair. And while some teachers were on sick out due to the deplorable conditions of their school. Saint Lucia is in trouble. Our education system is in trouble. Serious trouble. What a chaos. Big chaos. But mind you, they will boast about the 4,000 laptops. Empty laptops, see? Empty laptops to fool the parents. The same parents who had, who still had to buy textbooks for their children. They spent so much money, hundreds of dollars. Whereas the ebooks equipped with the students' school texts and other educational materials could have been continued to facilitate loading and to save the parents hundreds of dollars. At a time when, you know, the price of everything has spiralled. Where is the foresight and planning for education in this country? Where are we going? It didn't take us very long to see that even the Minister of Education has no progressive plan to take education to a new level in this country. Saint Lucians, Mama if I'm bored, I say to you that we should no longer accept mediocrity from this failing Labour administration. We cannot afford to remain quiet and complacent. We cannot allow our fellow brother or sister to suffer victimisation under a Labour Party administration and for us to turn a blind eye and say, it didn't happen to me. We have to look out for each other. The time has come for us to act. The time has come for us to act. And the time to act is now. We are here to protect you. Not the victory we're protecting, you know. We are protecting you and your livelihoods. That's what we're doing. And I want to say to you, and you have to remember this. It didn't take them too long to realise that they were fooled. But we also want to remind the Labour Party that they can fool the people sometimes, but they can't fool the people all the time. Yes. They cannot fool the people all the time. And now that we have seen the light, let us all stand up for what is right in this country. We are going to rally with each other. We are going to fight for a better Saint Lucia.
Saint Lucia is in trouble. You just heard from Senator Polius. Doctor Polius told you what is happening, even in our school system. Now, you know, I sometimes pass through vocations to go to my farm. Last time I tried to pass, road closed, school closed, everything closed. That is in the Prime Minister's constituency. So I wanted to find out, why is the school closed? They told me the heavy ruler has become dead weight. And he is now acting like quicksand in his usual sabotage manner, which we found out very late. Once the man is not at the top, he's here. You know the man trying to sabotage the Prime Minister in his own constituency? You had seven weeks vacation. You did not fix the road. The week school is opening, that's when you're going to fix the road. But anyway, they will find out about him. But people, the thing about it is, we are not joking when we tell you Saint Lucia is in trouble. The good thing is you can see for yourself. Now, before I go further, I have a little announcement to make. PA 8276, you are pinning the police. Because I have something to say about what the Prime Minister said about the UWP recently. But I will call on the other speaker before I do so. But Soufret, I am in a position to tell you, you in trouble in Soufret. History always repeats itself. Your parliamentary representative was once the parliamentary representative for my constituency, Grosilé. You saw the kind of work that was done in your constituency in the last five years. And I'm telling you now, you will not see any work done in your constituency for the next five years. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a number of hard workers in this party who formed a team with a visionary leader called Alan Chastney. And for three years, even Alan Chastney says in five years, I'm telling you, it was three years. For two years, there was Covid, nobody was here. In three years, look at the work that was done in this country by the United Workers' Party. Now, some people told me in Anslarik and in Soufret, more work was done than in Grosilé, than I did in Grosilé in five years. And the guys only did that in three years. So you know what to do. Because it will be your loss if you continue along the path that you have taken so far. I am sure you are seeing the evidence. But we'll start from north and come down. For now, I want to announce to you, given the kind of work that was done in his constituency, given the kind of representation he gave us at his ministry, a man who understood the meaning of tourism to our economy in Saint Lucia, unlike your Prime Minister, who was a former minister of tourism. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to introduce to you right now, to speak to you on matters pertaining to the subject your Prime Minister does not understand, that is tourism. I want him to speak to you on a situation that was created by your current Prime Minister, cost of living. I now introduce our deputy political leader, Senator Dominic Fady, to address you.
Can you feel the winds of victory blowing in Soufret tonight? Well, Philip DeClaire, I cannot say shot, I cannot say talk. The tall man he was speaking about was Spider. And the short man, he is afraid of his guy Joseph. Mama if I'm bored, serious business tonight. Because as you've heard from many speakers, we are in trouble. Now, Mama if I'm bored, I have to deal with home, right where I am here in Soufret. And I remember being in the cabinet with Senator Howard Stanislas. And I looked across from the hills of Canaries and I see the magnificent progress that was happening here in Soufret. And so, when Howard called me on election night and he said, Dom, it doesn't look like Soufret is coming home to the UWP tonight. It was one of the most saddest moments in my life. Because from then, I knew that by abandoning Howard and going to Emma, that Soufret was in trouble. From election night, I knew. I knew because I was here when we opened the town square. I was here when we sat and we unveiled under the visionary leadership of Alan Chastney and Howard Stanislas, the most beautiful town square there is in Saint Lucia. I was here when we opened the Hummingbird Beach project right here in Soufret. I was here. I was here. I was here when we opened up the bus terminal in Soufret. One of Howard's favorite projects. Because Howard saw that by building up the infrastructure of Soufret, that what Soufret was becoming was a beacon of hope for small communities everywhere in the developing world. And so, it's a travesty from coming from the best representative that Soufret has ever had to the worst representative that Soufret has ever had. That's a travesty. And so tonight, I'm going to put the political leader under some pressure. Because I am going to stand here proudly tonight and endorse Mr. Howard Stanslers as the next candidate for Soufret constituency. Howard is the man. There is too much work to continue to build the destiny of this constituency. Now, I must tell you that while all of that was happening for Howard, I can't tell you I wasn't a little jealous, eh? I was a little jealous. Because you see, a very special place in Alan's, Chastney's heart is the constituency of Soufret. And so, Soufret was the blue-eyed constituency because it was the Prime Minister's favorite child at the time, his second favorite child after Mekud Sal. And so, Soufret, you have made a significant blunder by getting rid of an MP who was the best you've had in history and getting rid of a Prime Minister who had a soft spot for Soufret, who understood that Soufret played a significant role in the economic development of Saint Lucia. When I went to see him, he told me that Dom, Anslawé and Canaries will grow once Soufret grows. Chouzal will grow once Soufret grows. What is happening to the growth today? What is happening to all the work we did in village tourism? What is happening in the new facilities we put down at the sulfur springs? What's happening to the new baths? What is new? What has Emma done in two years? Absolutely nothing for the people of Soufret. But you should not be surprised. Because in Grozily where I grew up, we had a rep called Spider. And Emma had come in and replaced five glorious years of Spider, who did magnificent work in the constituency. And Emma was a complete failure. That's why she had to run from Grozily and come here to fool the people of Soufret. And so, my brothers and sisters, Soufret is in deep trouble. Anslawé is in deep trouble and Saint Lucia is in deep trouble. Now, let's get to the meat of the matter. We have a situation in our country, which is gripping all of us. The Labour Party says that they are gouvernemental way, yes? Isn't that correct? Yes? But how could you be a government of the poor and you allow bread to go up? You allow gas to go up? You allow cooking gas to go up? You allow the price of electricity to go up? You allow food in the supermarket to go up on the backs of the poor people of this country? How can you say that there's nothing you're able to do? Because the inflation is imported, Philip J. Pierre would like us to believe. Now, if you cannot do anything, if you do not have any ideas, then step aside and allow a visionary leader in Alan Michael Chastney to come in and lead Saint Lucia out of the trouble that it's in. And so, I do not agree because other governments have done wonderful things to protect their people. You go to Saint Kitts and you see that they have reduced and removed completely duties from barrels going into Saint Kitts. They have reduced the excise tax on fuel. They have reduced the fuel surcharge on electricity. They have capped bus fares so that bus fares would be cushioned and stabilized and their people will not have to face the increases of bus fares. They have decided as well that they will cap the price of gas and they have given a subsidy for the gasoline importers in their country. But at one time in Saint Lucia, we had even the price of kerosene being at record levels under the leadership of Philip J. Pierre and the Saint Lucia Labour Party. And so, brothers and sisters, they told us that food would not be affected. But look, Spider has read a memo from KFC to its customers showing us that food will be affected. Because if you go by KFC now, they are saying, "Come October, you will have to pay new and increased rates for all of their products." Now, it tells you that Philip J. Pierre doesn't understand the economy. Philip J. Pierre doesn't understand how to manage the economic affairs of this country, which is why he would make a statement like that. Now, I want to say to you that in the worst of times, in the worst of times, all of the things that Philip has promised, Alan Chastney did it in the worst of times. In the worst of times, in the worst of times during Covid, Alan Chastney didn't promise 1,500 to people who were going through a tough time. He delivered 1,500 in income support to the NIC workers of this country. He went to the World Bank and he said, "Look, there are people in our country, taxi drivers, hairdressers, barber shops, farmers, unregistered workers who are not registered with NIC. And now that the tourism industry and the general economy is closed, I need to borrow some money so that we can give these people some income support." That's how you lead through a crisis. He said to the same World Bank that we have 6,000 families that are going to be affected by the high electricity bills. And today, if you look at the Social Economic Review, electricity price has gone up by 30%. But Alan Chastney, in that time, with very little fiscal room, said that we are going to give support in electricity bills to 6,000 families all over Saint Lucia. That was done in the worst of times. Alan Chastney never put on a 2.5% tax on the backs of poor people struggling in this country. He never did. In fact, what he did, he said that at this difficult time, people are struggling to pay their loans. "I am going to remove property tax." And for three years, businesses nor residents never paid property tax while we were recovering from Covid. But Philip J. Pierre put on our backs a 2.5% tax. And then he tells us that he cannot do anything about inflation. He cannot do anything about our suffering. He cannot do anything about the price of bread going up. He cannot do anything for the vendor in Soufret who has no business because there are zero cruise ships coming to the harbor. He cannot do anything for the worker in Soufret who has less hours because Ernest Hillier has messed up the airlift situation of this country. He cannot do anything to the tour guides at the sulfur spring because they are in rotation and they are having less pay? That's a failed leader. That's a clueless leader. That's an incompetent leader. And we must get rid of Philip J. Pierre. We must get rid of him and install a visionary leader to deal with the inflation problem affecting our country. And so, brothers and sisters, don't make them fool you. You walk through Castries, you walk through Soufret and people who are trying to do something for themselves are finding it tough. It's not just businesses. People are almost begging you to give them a sale. And when people are begging you to give them a sale, you must know that things are hard for everyone in this country. But Philip doesn't understand that. He doesn't understand the plight that the small man is going through. He doesn't understand how to protect you from the high cost of living. All he cares about is protecting the Labour Party's victory. That's all he cares about. And so, he has failed to protect us from crime. He has failed to protect us from cost of living. He has failed at doing the job of Prime Minister. And so, this business about who is the best tourism manager in our country. And we have to talk about this here in Soufret because Soufret is the breadbasket of the tourism sector. And we must deal with some of those mistruths that the Minister of Tourism and the Prime Minister continues to spread in the country, to make people feel like they are doing such a great job. Now, we launched a program here in Soufret called the Village Tourism Project. And you've seen evidence of it everywhere. You've seen the square, you've seen the Hummingbird project, you've seen the bus terminal, you've seen the Chastney Bridge. You've seen a whole host of programs to help to create a better enabling environment for the community of Soufret. The Labour Party came in and they took over this project, which really was to encourage more small businesses in tourism, was to create greater ownership amongst Lucia's within the tourism industry, was to make sure that there were more Airbnbs, that there were more restaurants, there were more bars, there were more tours owned by people in Soufret and people in Saint Lucia. And Howard and myself and the former Prime Minister worked very diligently to get Soufret going and to make sure that Soufret, even in the difficulty of times with Covid, that it could recover as fast as possible. The Labour Party took over this program. And the only thing they have done is change the name from village tourism to community tourism. When last have you heard anything from the Minister of Tourism about community tourism or village tourism? He is a complete failure of the people of Soufret. He's a complete failure of hotel workers. And he too deserves to lose his job. They want to make you believe that Alan Chastney has never built a hotel. Could you believe that nonsense? I mean, Alan Chastney built his own hotel, it's called Coco Pam. He put his own money and built his own hotel. Philip J. Pierre and Ernest Hillier combined has never built a single bedroom in the history of tourism in this country. There's no debate. You have never built a bedroom, you cannot talk. This is a man who has put his money where his mouth is. He believes in the people of Saint Lucia. He believes in our brand. He believes in our uniqueness. He believes that we can be the best. That's why he and his family have invested their money. He's not siding on the sidelines, trying to fool you for a vote. He is showing you that he believes in Soufret. The first time Alan Chastney entered politics, it was right here in Soufret that he came to run because he believes in the potential of Soufret and he believes in the people of Soufret. So I don't need to go down the long list. I have about 20 hotels that Alan Chastney brought to Saint Lucia. But I'm not going to go down the list because that's not the point. The point is, is that there's nobody in Saint Lucia, including myself, that has the international respect and has the credibility as a tourism manager like Alan Chastney. Philip J. Pierre, you cannot compare. So they can jump high and jump low in parliament. Every time they slip up, we will take them to court. This is all about trying to discredit our leader. This is all about trying to destabilize the United Workers Party. This is all about confusing you, Mama Iflaba. This is all about trying to get rid of the thorn in their side. This is all about trying to stay in power. But Mama Iflaba, I have got news for them tonight. Change is coming soon. Change is coming soon. Change is coming in Soufret. Change is coming in Anslawé. Change is coming in Chouzal. Well, we have to worry here because Philip is still in charge. Mama Iflaba, we have to worry because Philip J. Pierre is still in charge. We have to worry. Now, I see my good friend Ernest Hillier puts out a press release to tell us that Saint Lucia has expanded its flights from the US by 7%. And I say to myself, where has Ernest Hillier been? We have lost from the US market 13 flights a week. 13 flights a week from the US market alone, which is a total of 33% of our total flights to Saint Lucia. You increasing the flights by 7% is not good enough. That's why we are under pressure. That's why there are no jobs in this country. That's why hotels are in rotation. That's why the taxi drivers don't have trips. That's why there are zero cruise ships in the harbor. Because you have mismanaged the industry. You have mismanaged the airline. So the plan under your visionary government, while we were dealing with Covid, was to make sure that we had a strong US market. So that for the first time in the history of our country, we had American airlines flying from Chicago and we got that during Covid. For the first time in the history, we had American airlines from JFK, New York. For the first time in history, we had JetBlue flying three times a week from New Jersey Newark Airport. For the first time in the history of tourism management in our country, we had Dallas, a flight from American Airlines coming out of the state of Dallas. Let me explain why that's important. Chicago was important because there was a monopoly in Chicago. And by putting American competition on the route. JFK was important because there was a monopoly at New York. JFK was important because there was a monopoly at New York. Miami was important because it was a second flight that gave more frequency, more option and convenience to the customer. And Dallas was important because unlike the rest of the US, Dallas as a state is a very hot state. And so as a result, you don't only have business in the winter, you also have business in the summer months when people from Texas are trying to escape the heat wave of that state. Put Ernest Hilaire in charge of the tourism industry and all these flights are gone, disappear, zero, gone from our country. And that is his record. He has squandered and mismanaged the tourism industry by squandering the airlift of our country. And so we rate him as zero. Carnival and Jazz cannot save tourism by itself. Carnival is one week, Mr. Minister. Jazz is one week. A year have 52 weeks. The farmers have 52 weeks of products. The taxi drivers have 52 weeks of loans to pay. The vendor have 52 weeks of stocks for sale. The hotel workers have 52 weeks of bills to pay. So you coming and tell us that you had a good carnival and you had a good jazz is not good enough. That's not how you manage a destination. So Mamaiflabor, there is so much more that I wish to tell you. There is so much more that we must get into. Time doesn't permit me to do so today. But I know that you are feeling tough. I know you have victimized under this government. I know that they have abandoned you. I know that they are coming for a lot of you personally. I know how vindictive they are, but I want to leave you with a very encouraging scripture that my grandmother used to say. Weeping may endure for a night, but joy comes in the morning. And so it's time for action. It's time for change. It's time to get rid of Philippe J. Pierre and this clueless government. Let's start the campaign now. Let's take back our country. Let's rebuild St. Lucia and put it into a period of prosperity under Alan Chastney and the United Workers' Party. Mamaiflabor, thank you. Good night.
Thank you, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, sorry. Now, it doesn't matter whether message come from a tall guy or a short guy, the message is what's important. The message is what is important and you got a powerful message from a short guy. I will tell you this, we are in trouble in St. Lucia. St. Lucia is in trouble right now, but we have hope because when I listen to the men and women of the United Workers' Party, I believe the song when it says, every little thing will be alright. You just have to do your part. You just have to play a role. Take a stand and ensure that we rid St. Lucia of the crisis that it is facing right now. I tell you, St. Lucia is in trouble when your Prime Minister admits that as a former tourism minister, he did not understand the value of tourism to the St. Lucian economy. You heard a former tourism minister and you know the man knew his onions, he knows his salt. And he performed only to find that we are in reverse now. You know we are in trouble in St. Lucia when because of the poor handling of the crime situation in this country, Philippe J. Pierre, who is the Minister of National Security, has thrown his hands up in the air, admitted that he does not have the answer and is calling for help. After we had signaled to him what he should do, we made recommendations, he rejected it. I asked him to step down. I pleaded with the Prime Minister to fire the National Security Minister. He did not respond. Today, today, when there is an advisory. Now, you see me, I come from Grozily. Now, the Mtnican tourist is very important to the town of Grozily. So when there is an advisory from the French asking the people to be careful if they go into St. Lucia because of the crime rate in this country, people, our, our Prime Minister was informed of that, he looked more surprised than anybody else and he did not even know that that had taken place. Something that was in place for weeks, he did not know. People, we are in trouble. Now, I mentioned that you are in trouble throughout the length of breath and, and breath in St. Lucia. Our country is in trouble. But since we are in Soufret tonight, let us narrow our focus to Soufret. And I saw Soufret. Already you have the natural beauty. Already you have the geography that is world-class and you have some remarkable people who have come from this constituency. And then you had a parliamentary representative who had the interest of the people of Soufret at heart, a hard worker. I mean, Dominic spoke for both of us when he said, honestly, I watched Harold and what was happening in Soufret, et de jalous. And I consider, I consider myself to be a damn good parliamentary representative and I'm proud of my record. But fellows like Dominic and, and Harold made me look ordinary. That is the kind of representation you rejected in this place. And guess what? Guess what? Sir Grozily reject, what am I say? Grozily learned the lesson by having Emma for five years and realizing that she could not deliver. She could not deliver and you made that mistake. People, let us correct that mistake. I now call on your next parliamentary representative who will correct that mistake and put an end to the troubles on Soufret. Mamaiflabor! Soufret Fosse Jacques, good night. Let me say a special good evening to our political leader and members at the head table tonight. Good night to our supporters, members who are not here in the hall tonight, but who are at home viewing on GVD TV, viewing on Facebook and other social media platforms. Of course, to our supporters in the diaspora, those of us in Texas, in New York, in Miami, in Canada, in England, all over, a pleasant good evening to each and every one of you. My defeat in the July 16th, in the July 26th, 2021 general elections was disappointing to me and to many of you here tonight. It was disappointing because I felt that I, with the guidance and support of the government led by Honorable Alan Chastney and the United Workers' Party, worked extremely hard at transforming the length and breadth of our beloved Soufret, mostly on the very trying and difficult circumstances. A fact which was evidenced by the growing terms in which every visitor and St. Lucians who visited the town of Soufret described the ongoing transformative development. It was disappointing because I felt that the people of Soufret Fosse Jacques gave my two immediate predecessors two consecutive terms, which in my opinion, their performance in the first term did not merit a second term. It was disappointing because based on my performance as a parliamentary representative, I believed I deserved a second term. However, however, the people of Soufret Fosse Jacques felt differently and voted for Emma Hippolyte under St. Lucia Liberal Party. And I accepted the results of that election and the will of the people of Soufret Fosse Jacques. I sat back and allowed a parliamentary representative to govern, although I knew deep down Soufret was going to be in trouble. Nothing would have happened. But then, less than two years since Philippe J. Pierre and this SLP administration assumed office, I was awakened by the cries of my people. I was awakened by the cries and tears of suffering and financial hardship of my beloved people of Soufret Fosse Jacques. Cries of the injustices, of the victimization, of the oppression, of the suppression, of the corruption, of the maladministration, of the nepotism and sheer incompetence of Philippe J. Pierre and his St. Lucia Liberal Party government. On numerous occasions, I warned the people of St. Lucia that based on the poor and desperate condition of Castries East, under 25 years of leadership and representation of Philippe J. Pierre, that he did not possess the capacity or the ability to represent 17 constituencies. Therefore, Mamaiflabor, St. Lucia, are you surprised at the mess that he has made in the affairs of the country? If the man cannot handle one constituency, how do you expect him to handle 17 constituencies? My people of Soufret Fosse Jacques, Philippe J. Pierre and his incompetent, clueless and visionless government have put us in trouble. St. Lucia is in deep trouble and Soufret is in trouble. The situation is dire. The situation requires the vision, the experience, the expertise, the innovation, the creativity, the strategic prowess and commitment of a united workers' party government led by our tried, tested, reformed leader, a man with a vision, and that is Alan Michael Chastney. My people of Soufret Fosse Jacques, do not let your hearts be troubled. I have heard your cries of anguish. I am coming back to fight the wrongs that needs resistance. That needs resistance to help demand accountability, fairness and respectability from this government. I am coming back into this fight to continue the development plan which together we am backed upon on June 17th, 2016. I am coming back in response to your clarion call to help rescue St. Lucia and Soufret, but I am not coming alone. I am coming back with the trusted backing and support of our political leader Alan Chastney and the qualified men and women of the United Workers' Party. Philippe J. Pierre's lack of preparedness when he came into office is now glaringly obvious for all to see. Despite his bombastic boast that he was the best prepared to be Prime Minister, today the entire nation has been made to pay for electing a government that presented its guest based on lies, propaganda, empty promises and beating empty pants rather than presenting solid, well-fought-out, sustainable plans for the holistic development of all our people. Mamaiflabor Soufret, I am back in this fight to stand toe-to-toe with you, the people, to stop the victimization which is taking place at the Soufret Regional Development A place, when we came into office, we found 140 staff employed. Under my representation, no one was fired. At the end of my representation, at the end of my representation, in 2021, we had created over 60 jobs. We left with a staffing of 206 employees at the foundation. Within months of coming to office, Emma Hippolyte, under the representation of Emma Hippolyte and the chairman and CEO of the foundation, over 25% of our people were fired. They were killed by Emma Hippolyte. They did not care if these people had to feed their families. They did not care if these people had children to send to school. They didn't care if they had bills to pay, rent to pay, loans to pay, mortgages to pay. They just fired them all. They do not care. This is a fight for you, the 25 persons who were fired, that when I return as parliamentary representative, your jobs are back. You are going to get your jobs back. In the foundation, when we came in, the revenue was only $4 million a year. But with the leadership of Alan Chastney, United Workers' Party, with the vision of a board of directors and good management, we were able to build new pools, repair the jetties, collect the fees and other, and other docks. We were able to build a beach pack and the revenue grew by 2019 to over $9 million. What have they done? They have just fired our people. They have not created one new job, but that is coming to an end soon. The hatchet man at the Soufret Foundation has five positions. The pensioner hatchet man, he has the position of chairman, he has the position of CEO, he has the position of operations manager, he has the, the position of financial controller and the, and the position of HR manager. Five positions to a pensioner when our young people of Soufret Fosse Jacques, who have the qualifications, the capacity to hold those offices are in limbo on the streets. They have killed them. I am in this fight to ensure that when I return to represent you, the people of Soufret Fosse Jacques, the young people of Soufret Fosse Jacques, will occupy those positions. I am in this fight again because I have heard your cries of the condition of the roads and the infrastructure in this constituency. When we came into office, this political leader, under his leadership, we rolled out a comprehensive national road rehabilitation program where almost $300 million went into road rehab and reconstruct in this country. Soufret got its first share. For over 40 years, the Labour Party fooled the people and told them they could not repair the new development roads. The roads have, have not been transferred to government, all sorts of excuses. In less than three years, under my representation, under the leadership of Alan Chastney, we were able to repair over 80% of the roads. And it's over two years of representation, Emma Hippolyte have not patched one pothole at new development, file as bill and malapice of the road. Esperance, for over 50 years, the road was there but not motorable to any, of any vehicle ordered on four-wheel drives up to a point. We went and we built a brand-new road from Esperance through Diamond into Soufret. We had contracted 20 young contractors to build the, the drains. 2021 came, we lose the elections, they stopped the road project. All those young people are out of a job, the drains are incomplete and today the water is undermining the Esperance Diamond Road. And these are the people who tell you they care. Belfort, we had under the road rehabilitation program, project, the road to Bouaden, Belfort to Bouaden, they stopped it. We had the old French road at Belfort into Hemitage, they stopped it. They kill all the road projects. Why? Because they do not love you, they do not care about you. It is all about politics for Emma Hippolyte under St. Lucia Liberal Party. Look at the condition of the etangs to Fosse Jacques Road. A road which every day the, the residents and visitors traverse. The Soufret Foundation makes almost $2 million a year in entrance fees at the Gopito Trail. When I was the parliamentary representative, when the government was unable at any time to port all this road, I would ensure that the Soufret Foundation spent over 20 I would ensure that the Soufret Foundation spent over twenty thousand dollars and subcontract young men in Fosse-Libre and these areas to pothole the road from Etangs into Fosse-Libre. Twenty thousand dollars. But the Labour Party, Emma Hippolyte, cannot take twenty thousand dollars to pothole that road where they make almost two million dollars a year. But they can give the chairman, the CEO, the FC, operations manager of the foundation, eighty thousand dollars from the foundation. That is what we get from Emma Hippolyte and the Labour Party. Chacon-Belle Road, we did the same. Pothole it whenever central government couldn't have done it. A mere ten thousand dollars, but they cannot do it today. The Belfort Road, now it takes the residents to come together to get the cement, get the ready-makes. I took part in it as well in the coup d'etat to fix up the Belfort Road, a mere five thousand dollars. When the Soufret Foundation was approached, they sent a cheque of two hundred dollars. Sabaka menges sis saksima. But you can give the man with five positions firing flambo's eighty thousand dollars within eight months. Bouaden Road, a disaster. The Soufret to Fosse-Jacques Road, the same mini-bus operators who wanted to strike anytime you had a few potholes. You are not hearing them today. Nobody said anything. They're all quiet. The Fombenier Road, in a mess. Palmist, in a mess. The entire Soufret constituency is in trouble. They have put you worst. But very soon, the clock is ticking. I will be back to continue the work. I am in this fight, Soufret-Fosse-Jacques, to fight against Emma Hippolyte and the Labour Party for victimizing our two young men in Soufret with heavy equipment. When a parliamentary representative could make a call to a contractor and tell him she doesn't want any flambo equipment in a river where they are disheating, that tells you that this parliamentary representative, this lady is wicked, she is evil and she doesn't deserve to be parliamentary representative. Parman, you are too late to match, too late to see the million, your l'Église, your plus mauvais a toi. Because you pass out the mood, the young man soufflait. You're dead at war, kidney excavator. Jallet bar, he no contract. Your subcontract, you, for you sadis, still live here. As parliamentary rep, ou quoi couille? Ou quoi dit? You know, the contractor, ou parlez, pierce equipment flambo à la vie à salat. Wickedness. But your days are numbered, Emma Hippolyte. When I return to office, those two young men's excavators will be in that river disheating. I am back in the fight for the discrimination against the people of Palmist. I remember when we were doing stimulus, Palmist alone, we would have a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty people in the stimulus for Palmist. Today, because of Palmist's support for Harold Stanislas and the United Workers' Party, whenever there is step, they only hire fifteen people from Palmist. And they tell the Palmist people, the council is already cleaning Palmist. The victimization is going to come to an end. I move to healthcare. I hear the cries of you the people of Soufret when it comes to healthcare. The people in opposition who had all the answers, who knew how to solve all health problems. Two years, Soufret Hospital, no toilet paper, no medication, nothing. Emma Hippolyte have killed the Soufret Hospital. When we came into office, I retrofitted and rehabilitated the X-ray room for the X-ray machine which was donated by the EU government. I rehabilitated the laboratory which was given the equipment by EU. Today, almost two years, the X-ray room at the Soufret Hospital is closed. Why is it closed, Mama Ifrabo? Because the radiologist, the Cuban radiologist, was operating the machine. He left to go back to Cuba about eighteen months ago, about a year and a half, almost two years ago. And the parliamentary representative, Philippe J. Pierre, cannot get somebody to replace him so that you, the people of Soufret, can get your X-rays done right here in Soufret. And that is a government that say they care. They don't care. They only want to protect the victory. But your health is not important to them. But rest assured, if they do not get the extra unit back operational, when I return, it will be operational. And when I return, it's not only the extra unit that will be operational because we had a plan, a holistic plan for healthcare in Soufret and Saint Lucia. We had already acquired three acres of land from the Soufret estate to build a new twenty-five-bedroom hospital in Soufret. It was going to have dialysis, it was going to have the compression chamber, X-ray, mini-operating room, everything you could think of to help support St. Jude's and OKEU. You are not hearing anything about Soufret Hospital. We already had a bold agreement coming into place where a private entity was going to construct, equip the hospital and give us a ten-key project for you, the people of Soufret. But must have, Emma Hippolyte, parlez fin. Mais l'amour vient à toi. Écoute, pour plus moi, as parliamentary representative, number one project on my list, the new Soufret Hospital with twenty-five beds. We had a plan for youth and sports development because we had a national plan for sporting infrastructure, ladies and gentlemen. We embarked on rehabilitating the Soufret Mini Stadium. When we put the artificial turf of the football field full-size, full-size FIFA-regulated football field, they said that it is cancerous. You're dead to part, to the fill, like a bike assayer. Mais c'est juste ça, les dipoulets, dit yo à l'aine. Tous les jours. Yo, quand je dormis à l'aine, que dit, t'es content, yo content. Pan casse à bord. But when they came, they knew we had a second phase of that development. We had a video board to put up. We had a media room, the VIP room to put up. We had the twenty-five-meter Olympic pool at the end to put up. We had a netball court to put up. Up to now, not a word, not a word, not a word. But ladies and gentlemen, the people of Soufret will have a world-class completed mini-stadium when I return as your parliamentary representative. We had the administrative building. We had a concept already, that's the old town hall building, where we were going to decentralize government services. You didn't have to go to Castres to get a birth certificate, to get a passport, to get a driver's license. All of these services would have been offered right here in Soufret. No plans for the town hall. No plans whatsoever, but it is going to happen sooner than later. We had the second and third phases for Ultra Ford with additional concession booths, the restaurant. We had to redo the front of the bouillade, the beach and everything. Nothing has happened. You thought it by la, ma mère savait ça, you felt la. Je t'ai toujours dit, bah, ouais, pas ça, ouvre. We had started the waterfront redevelopment with the café opposite the post office, Charline Café. We were going to pedestrianize that entire waterfront. We were gonna build a boardwalk from Barron's Drive from La Poutie Bolo all the way to the waterfront. Not a word. But what we are hearing today, Emma Hippolyte is having secret dates with investors. Emma Hippolyte, Emma Hippolyte is having secret deals with investors. The same investors when they were in opposition, they did not want to see. The same investors, they call riches. But today, Emma Hippolyte and the Labour Party are having secret dates and secret deals with them. I want to ask Emma Hippolyte, when did the people of Soufret give you the authority to go and have secret dates and make secret deals on the behalf? And you all spoke so much of transparency and accountability. The agreement is signed and sealed. We want to know what is in that agreement. You need to come and tell the people of Soufret, is that agreement in your favor and that of the Labour Party or the people? What was the deal about? What did you all agree upon? We want the transparency and we are demanding Emma Hippolyte make the deal for GPH for the development of both Soufret public. Because you are giving away our pot for forty years to the same foreigner you all detested, your opposition. The same people who spoke of patrimony. Today, not Soufret, but Castres is not our patrimony. We want to know as well, is it true that in that deal you all have signed that no development can take place at Portview Fort for forty years? We want to know and we want answers. Don't allow us to speculate. Come out and tell us what is in the deal for us to say what it is that we like or do not like about that deal. Today, Mama Ifrabo, our vendors, other viewing points, our vendors in town, our tour guides, our taxi drivers, restaurants, bars, all are suffering. Why? No tourists around the place. Since mid-April, we have not had one cruise ship in Saint Lucia. Not one. Honestly, Philippe J. Pierre, Saint Lucia Labour Party, have failed us in tourism. And as a result, you, the people, are the ones paying the price. You are paying the price for the incompetence. Tourism is in trouble in Soufret. It is in trouble in Saint Lucia and we have to get rid of Philippe J. Pierre and this incompetent cabal of ministers. Agriculture, dead. Kill it. That's the favorite word of the Labour Party. Kill it. Let us kill everything. Because we fool the people with lies and propaganda. Let us kill everything. We had built access roads in Fomben-Bouaden to Fombel-Fort. We needed a few feet of road to complete. Nothing is happening there. We spoke about building the road in Fosse-Jacques, the De Go Zaminat Road. Up to now, nothing has been said. When we were in government, since Hurricane Thomas in twenty-ten, we had four major landslides blocking the farmers and visitors to Abasso, Waterfall and the rainforest and the farms. They never, they never did anything to unblock the roads. It had to take my representation and United Workers' Party to unblock this road in twenty-eighteen. Up to now, nothing has been done on the De Waal Road. But they are the ones who proclaim to love farmers, to have your interests at heart. But they are the ones making you suffer today. Mama Ifrabo, we are in trouble. And some of you in Soufret keep on saying, I'm afraid of victimization. I don't want to come out. I don't want them to see me. I tell you, the people, tonight, we need to stand up. We need to fight. Because all of us in Soufret, all of us are victims of victimization by the Labour Party. All of Saint Lucia, all Saint Lucians are victims of victimization by Philippe J. Pierre and the Saint Lucia Labour Party. When a government have the audacity in these difficult times, Saint Lucia Flambo Family, to raise the price of fuel on you, the people, to seventy dollars a gallon, they are victimizing each and every one of us. We all have vehicles. We all go to the pumps. They are victimizing us. When a government can increase the price of bread, they are victimizing all of us because we all eat bread morning, noon and night. When a government can increase bus fares in these difficult times, they are victimizing all of us because we all use the public transportation system. When a government can increase cooking gas to over forty dollars a cylinder, they are victimizing all of us because we all cook at home on the stove. And when a government in these difficult and trying times can put a two-point-five-percent tax on the backs of struggling Saint Lucians, they are victimizing each and every one of us. So there is no need to say, I'm afraid of victimization. You are already being victimized by Emma Hippolyte, Philippe J. Pierre and this incompetent government. And it is time for you to rally with United Workers' Party. It is time that you stand for something or you fall for anything. Soufret Flambo Family, this thing about, I am behind the scenes. I am working behind the scenes. That is unacceptable right now. That is unacceptable. In Soufret, starting tonight, in Saint Lucia, starting tonight, we don't want any flambo, anybody to be behind the scenes. We want everybody to be on the front line. We all have to be on the front line. Because we have to fight. We have to fight for the heart and soul of this country. We have to fight to save Saint Lucia. We have to fight to save Soufret and we cannot be behind the scenes. You have to be at the front line of the battle in that war against Philippe J. Pierre and the Labour Party. So for the single mothers, they touted so much in opposition whom they have forgotten about. You have to fight now. You have to be on the front line. To the youth of Saint Soufret, they are victimizing. You have to be on the front line of that fight, that battle with Emma Hippolyte and the Labour Party. To the elderly, to the stalwarts, to the taxi drivers, to the vendors, to the Labour Party supporters who voted for them and who are regretting right now. You have to be on the front line of that fight to get rid of Emma Hippolyte, Philippe J. Pierre and the Saint Lucia Labour Party. And that fight, if we have to match, we are going to match. If we have to protest, we are going to protest. If we have to shout, we are going to shout. If we have to scream, we are going to scream. If we have to agitate, we are going to agitate. We will do what it takes to get rid of Philippe J. Pierre, the Labour Party, to save Soufret, save Saint Lucia. This, Mama Ifrabo Soufret-Fosse-Jacques, this is the most important elections in the history of Soufret, in the history of Saint Lucia. Do not take it lightly. We cannot, we cannot have another five years of this incompetent, clueless, visionless man as Prime Minister to continue to embarrass us every time he speaks. We need, we need to save ourselves from the economic and social bondage of the Labour Party. We need to remove the clothes of the Labour Party around our necks. But by doing so, we need to fight the good fight. We need to bind together. We need to mobilize. We need to register our new voters. We need to influence. We need to convince people that the United Workers' Party under Alan Chastney is the party of choice. This is what we need to do. And I look forward to going around the constituency to hearing from you, the people of Soufret-Fosse-Jacques, to meeting persons one-on-one to help plan the way forward and to get rid once and for all. once and for all of what grossly rejected and nearly accepted in 2021. We are going to reject her once and for all. We are going to put her into retirement where she belongs. And we are going to continue on the path of transformation, the path of progress, development, opportunities for each and every Soufarian, whether you are red, yellow, black or white. Thank you very much. Goodnight, Soufret for Saint Jacques. Wow. What dynamism. Saint Lucia is in trouble, but with the United Workers' Party, there is hope. People, another round of applause for the next parliamentary representative of Soufret for Saint Jacques. No, no, no. Every time, every time, people hear me. Every time I come to Soufret, every time I come to Soufret and I ask a question, I find myself in trouble. Who is the miserable woman? You are not giving a lot of noise. You are not giving a lot of noise. You are not giving a lot of noise. I'm not hearing. I want to ask a question. Now, before you answer, I want to warn you, don't put me in trouble. Every time I come to Soufret, you all putting me in trouble once I ask a question. I want to ask a question tonight. Who is the miserable woman in Soufret? We have a team that is ready to hit the ground running. The United Workers' Party, the only party that can rescue Saint Lucia from the demise that it has faced under the Saint Lucia Labour Party. Now, last year, there was a record set in Saint Lucia for the number of murders. Seventy-six people were killed in Saint Lucia as a result of gun violence, cutlass violence and what have you. You would think a Prime Minister, you would think a Minister of National Security would take note and do everything in his power to reverse that situation and at least reduce those numbers. So, as a responsible opposition, even before we were called upon, our political leader prepared some recommendations and forwarded it to the government of Saint Lucia and asked me to say, which I said, that we stand ready to work with the government on the crime fighting effort. Because we see the crisis that we are facing and we consider it to be a national disaster that we were prepared to play a role. The Prime Minister came out and said publicly that he took the letter and he threw it in the dustbin. In the meantime, our crime situation got so dire. We had such a crisis on our hands that in one of our towns in this country, criminals had us on the curfew. In one of our towns in this country, business people had to shut their doors because of crime. In one weekend, we had five murders. We saw little children, grandmothers, people that are not involved in criminal activity innocently being killed. The Prime Minister's only answer was to bring in the RSS. While the RSS were right here, murders continued to happen. I remember one of his colleagues, the guy who trained him, Dr Kenny Anthony, said indirectly to him that all the efforts that have been made have failed. You would think by then, he would have the good sense to at least see, while we are on opposite sides, this is a common cause. Let me take heed of what the opposition is saying and let me work with them because this is a national crisis that we must all come together to fight. When he realised the situation was out of hand, he went public again, threw his hands up in the air as Minister of National Security and said, "I surrender to the criminals. I have no answers. I am at the mercy of anyone who can assist me." Immediately, the United Workers' Party, a responsible opposition, resubmitted our recommendations to the Prime Minister and I reiterated on behalf of the United Workers' Party that we stood ready to work with them in the crime fighting effort. Oh my God. The man hit a tantrum. The words of the Prime Minister, and I want to quote him correctly, he said, "UWP wants to destroy Saint Lucia." And that the United Workers' Party was trying to cause chaos in this country. And that he did not think that we were genuine and that he would not take our advice and he would not work with us. How much more can a leader be divisive? How divisive can you be as a leader? That was an opportunity for Philippe Pierre to distinguish himself, show that he's a statesman, show that he has your best interests at heart and embrace the opposition and work together. I saw the Honourable Alan Chasney on occasions, for example, when we had a national disaster like a weather system, when we had Covid and other occasions, he called in the opposition for consultation and said, "Let us tackle this together." Well, sometimes they came, sometimes they didn't come. But the point is, he did the responsible thing as a leader who recognised when partisan politics had to be put aside and the interests of the country had to come first. But Philippe Pierre does not know that. And so, I will say, for the comments made by Philippe Pierre last Monday, I will say, they were absurd, they were beneath the office of Prime Minister, they were divisive and they were statements made by a man who is paranoid and has no answers. And I say, that if you thought Saint Lucia was not in trouble, he confirmed by his statements that we are in deep trouble in Saint Lucia. And so, he complained, he complained that we are praying for crime. Let me remind Philippe Pierre that among the sixty-something Saint Lucians, and that is according to the official figures, there are more than that. But among the sixty-something that they are quoting who have been killed in this country, they are both labour rights and Flabos who have lost their lives. Criminals do not discriminate by partisan affiliation. Criminals carry out their crime irrespective. They do not make distinction. So I don't know why the Prime Minister wants to make a distinction in the crime fighting effort when we all are affected by crime. Okay, there are many UWP's who are businesses that are affected directly by crime. And we all have lost some of our freedom. We all are living in fear. We all have our, our financial fortunes in jeopardy because of crime. And so, we stand ready once again to play a part, because we do have ideas and we do have suggestions. We are ready to play a part in the crime fighting effort and we are hoping that the Prime Minister can show some maturity as a leader and forget partisan politics on a serious issue such as this and embrace the opposition in trying to find an answer for an issue that he has no answers for. And he has admitted that he does not have the answers. And so, ladies and gentlemen, we are in trouble because the Prime Minister thinks that UWP goes to bed every night and wakes up in the morning hoping that there's more crime. He said that we are hoping that there are over a hundred murders for the year. But let me just say this. When I made the statement that we are on track to have over one hundred murders, it's because I was looking at the situation when we were only halfway in the year, we already had about fifty murders and I said, that was a warning. I was ringing the alarm because it did not seem to me that as Minister of National Security, he realised how urgent the situation was. I said, "Let us take heed and do something about it." Because if we continue like this, there will be over a hundred. We are well poised to set a new record. And I said, "These are not the kind of records we want to set." Okay? So, the Prime Minister can say what he wants, the Minister of National Security can say what he wants, but we are making a call in the interest of the country that if the Prime Minister wants for once to make a good decision and show leadership, he should relieve the Minister of National Security of his duties and engage someone who at least will be prepared to listen and work hand-in-hand with those who are prepared to make a contribution. Ladies and gentlemen, things are getting to fever pitch inside of here. And I noticed that we have quite a number of people watching us on live stream. We have over nine hundred, approaching one thousand. And it is my information that, by the way, they don't want to openly accept our, our advice, but they copy everything we do. You know, SLP have internal meetings, internal meetings too. I understand they have a live as well, they have what, two hundred and something? You know what happened? Saint Lucians have given up on them. They don't even listen to them anymore. And let me tell you the other reason why they have so few, hot last and maje, le Prime Minister at Capale. The man said, the man said, he will not consult with us or sit with us because everything, everything he does and every time he talks, we try to ridicule him. Mister Prime Minister, no one is ridiculing you. You are ridiculous. And so, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, as we hit fever pitch, they say back again issue. Saint Lucia is in trouble. The United Workers' Party, just as we stand ready to work with the government to solve the problems of this country, they do not want to work with us. Remove them and put us to work. Ladies and gentlemen, he, I was told, he just landed. But nevertheless, he is always grounded. I want to bring to you my next speaker. A man who has been the nemesis of the Labour Party. They have made all kinds of threats. They have made all kinds of allegations, but they cannot stop him. Tonight, I call on our first deputy leader, the man who will return to the seat of Castries South East as their representative, to address you at a time of crisis when Saint Lucia is in trouble, a man who is a worker, Guy Chouze.
Mama Iflabo! Bonsoir! Now, before I say anything, Philippe J. Pierre, soon nom ko gada du ye, kuye eleksio. You in government, you have fifteen, you say, call the elections. Because Flabo is ready. Tonight, I bring you greetings. I bring you greetings from the New York caucus, where we just had a major activity to raise funds for the party to help prepare us for the upcoming election. I want you to put your hands together for the New York caucus and our chairman, Terrell Puddin. I had the opportunity to be there and to address the gathering and I can tell you, the energy outside of Saint Lucia is as good as the energy in Saint Lucia to get rid of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. So se ba oni set li si nubawi. Nubawi outside of Saint Li Si. In fact, last night, before I left, I met with a group of people and they told me, we need to tell the Prime Minister that every Saint Lucian, not the Prime Minister Philippe Pierre, you know, our Prime Minister, Alan Chasney, that every Saint Lucian outside of Saint Lucia is ready to come back to Saint Lucia to vote out Philippe J. Pierre and the Saint Lucia Labour Party. I know the Texas caucus is following and I also had the opportunity to meet with the Texas branch and they are planning a big event for later this year or early next year. And Mister Political Leader, they have asked me to inform you that they are looking forward to having you present with them. Now, after I heard Harold. Let me, let me say something, I'll say a few things. Now, Flabos are speaking to us. If you did not go out and vote on election day, you voted for the Saint Lucia Labour Party. You see, we have to deal with the reality. The situation that Saint Lucia is in today, every Flabo who did not do what they had to do leading up to election, you are responsible. I expect Labour to vote for Labour, but I don't expect Flabos to stay home based on the propaganda of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. We told you the truth, you did not want to believe, but you chose to believe the lies of Labour. What is she doing? Now. Yodi se Minister of Commerce. Ek jugwadi, le jugwaka pronouns, commerce apathwa, ika do se Minister Commerce. So is some Emma se Minister Commerce. So, let's take a little time because a lot of things have been said. Let's just pause a moment and review that 2.5%. They tell you it would not affect food. If Labour has a PhD in anything, it is in lies and propaganda. There's nothing, even the Labour Party tell you, "Good morning," that is not true. Because this is a party that is built on lies and propaganda. And let me use myself as an example to highlight what I'm saying. What did they tell us about Richard Frederick? And where is Richard Frederick today? Ek tut se hipok quit lagi, ika do Richard, usan lan Flabo, ki pa vote by Flabo, because Richard, there's still a Flabo. Usablan Flabo ki pa vote by Flabo because Richard, there's still a Flabo. Abesa tutlay bakavote byo. We will learn. Guamundi, su batan ukaisati. So we are feeling it now. We are feeling it. So 2.5%, they tell you Philippe J. Pierre said it will not affect food. Isn't that what they told us? Iba yafekte mahi, so KFC pa mahi. Utansha, you remember between 2011 and 2016, when people were complaining about the high price of sausage? Emadi hotage viyana sausage like topshe. Ge se local brand na kiplibo mashia, otobliessa? Gozi Larry Jackly hotme ya ledho hot sufuye ebemesa hoten chbe. That is the last woman that should be elected in the politics of Saint Lucia. Layo temadeya about sufuye, pokimane ya ibaran sufuye se Gozile. Idi pa really connect about sufuye akor. Today, she come back to Sufray, you all voted for her? Now usadi mo se Flabo is ya obavote Bali, pitet savwe? But we did not do enough. We could have done more than what we did. And that is why I'm saying, I agree with Harold. This is not the time just for talking. This is the time for action. And I agree with Harold in saying, we not fighting no battle behind the scenes. Se pa muvi nuka fe isya. This is real. These are the days of our lives under the Saint Lucia Labour Party. So yo foote 2.5% taleno. And everything, so sam say Yodi? Hot kapalit up? You all are talking too much. So talk was too cheap. So yo pa me 2.5% huh? They put 5%, Digicel and Flo. So tutpa le hotkapalit nitila lefona sakai dubut. Labour di hotkapalit up? So we are muzzling you all with a 5% increase on talk is cheap. You think Labour Party playing? We may be playing games, but the Labour Party is not about games. And Emma told you about it. So so many people have explored under 2.5%, but let's look at it. So why order ti machine, oh dear? A vehicle that costs $20,000. Yo foote 2.5 la le, komo kapi? And the 2.5 is after they've calculated everything, cost, freight and insurance to bring it. Then they put the VAT and after they have done all of that, then they calculate the 2.5%. So in essence, the 2...
2.5 plus VAT, so you pay VAT on 2.5.
On the 2.5. So also yo may please go up we?
That's right.
They put the 12.5% after the 2.5%. Because if they had put the 2.5 after, it would be less. I want you all to understand. I want you all to understand what is going on with us in Saint Lucia. Because the Labour Party is not happy with where UWP is today. We lost 15 to. Some people believe we didn't lose. By whatever means, Labour Party is the government. Now, upasagele loteleksho, you cannot win Sufray by 400 votes. You have to win Sufray by 800, 900, 1,000 votes. So layo ka try volle, lakai 12 vote, yo ba isha volle. I want us to understand, Labour Party is not going to go down with a fight. You see the slogan, "Protecting the victory"? It's not about protecting the people. It's not about protecting the country. It's about protecting the victory. And who are the benefactors of the victory? Muemlema desemun sufuye, ek oli wo setlisi kika hela sigwe, ek kika hela piblik, ek kika hela su social media, ki benefis uzajwen depi Labour vini a office. I want you to tell me in two years of Labour, what you have benefited. Now, let me say something to the parents. Alan Shasney promised you a laptop computer with all the lesson plans and books on it. You would not have had to go and buy one textbook for the children for this academic year had UWP been in office. But you know what they give you? A blank laptop computer. And I challenged the Saint Lucia Labour Party to tell us how much money they spent on these computers. I just came from Walmart and I saw computers for $179, that is even better than the computers that they are giving the children here. But if you go and check that now, that is to go and buy retail. I'm not talking about wholesale and discount and anything like this. You see, it is easy. The Labour Party knows that they can fool the people of Saint Lucia easily. So, parents are buying telephones for their children that cost much more than a computer. But because the government hands you a computer, you believe that you have arrived. But where is the program of internet? So tutsema my lakini computer, let land Digicelak flo voya, ki saidi kavini? An increase. So now the parents have to find the additional money to pay for the package for the use of the computer. We were giving you the Mi-Fi device. We were giving you the package that was negotiated. You heard Labour Party trying to take claim for the local channels and the $25 package. That was an arrangement that myself and the political leader of the UWP as Prime Minister went into with the telephone companies to offer a package to the poor and vulnerable people of this country. Who wants to take claim for it can take claim. Tutsa ki bo se yo ki fe, tutsa ki pa bo yo ra do se Flabo ki fe. So let's look at it further. Let's look at what the Labour Party has offered you and what they have done. Now we have a Prime Minister. He say if they say short, he cannot say short and he cannot say tall. Now you know what the Prime Minister's problem is? He's not short, he's not tall and he's not average. Iba kut, iba ho, iba in between, iba amita. The man is invisible. We have an invisible Prime Minister running the country. Every time there is a problem and you call on him, what does he say? Layo di about crime, idi se paligi police, se papa iki te police. Se pa mueki di. The man is not Minister of Security. Yo man diwa about crime, udi se pa ugi police, se papa ugi te police. So that's an invisible Prime Minister. They tell him about the high prices. He said, "The prices, inflation is imported." So who is importing inflation into Saint Lucia? Is it Massey? Is it Digicel? Is it Cable and Wireless? For something to be imported, somebody must import it. It cannot come by itself. So I want the Prime Minister to tell the people of Saint Lucia who he hired to import inflation into Saint Lucia. Because the obligation agency ki weskosan pu importation. Now it so happened that the Minister of Commerce is the minister responsible for most importation under the government. Now tansha, se pa mueki di, in their own words, they asked the Minister of Commerce a simple question. Is it possible that the increase in prices that we are seeing in the supermarkets and on goods in Saint Lucia, that there can be price gouging? So you know, price gouging has to do with using, well, there are two ways they can use it. If you are the sole importer and you have no competition, you can put your product at whatever price you want. Or you are using a situation, an unfortunate situation, to capitalize on charging more than the thing is really worth. What was her response? So I want to say tonight, "As Minister Commerce, ek mercy, kafe mun sufere a setlisi." Utansha me dia, "As Minister Commerce, ek mercy." Kafe mun sufere espere a setlisi, because yo blechwe tutmun. They said, "Kill it." Now let's look at the things that Labour Party has killed. What have they killed? They killed a hospital in Sufray. Harold, we were on the verge of signing the agreement for a turnkey project in Sufray where a fully functional hospital would be handed over to the government of Saint Lucia. Samo, Emma, kill it. The Gozile Highway Spider, the fallen. Labour Party, kill it. Now that is the Emma doctrine. Remember, they spoke about the Bellrose Doctrine. Because Bellrose mutwe osaki desibo ze fe. So Emma vini ek on doctrine ni abesa, ek doctrine ni se kill it. So what happened to the Emma project? What happened to Saint Jude? She's sick. What happened to sugar? Because Yodi sugar kapao diabetes. So, when you drink rum by turns to sugar. When you eat rice, it turns to sugar. So everything, because all carbohydrates that you consume turns to sugar. So what is it that Emma is telling us? Now you, for us in Saint Lucia, everything that is good for this country, Labour says, "Kill it." That's the new Emma of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. Ek sufuye, ek setlisi, si nu pa me ekonu biye. Nu tutkamo pa ba Saint Lucia Labour Party. Because the evidence is there. Everything that, look at it, roads. What have they done with the roads? Bosamwe dakore ki wa su shimea. Because hotmen deka wepete nuba ama he shime. Lay Harold haya vejen no, pu fe kanal a shime espewas. Because ada di hotpa hena contract, because se ven contract itela, hotai malpa lay Harold. Because we don't understand, the government cannot give everybody a contract, but Harold gave more contracts than any other parliamentary representative in Sufray before him. So what has happened? Commerce ja sufuye ki ayen contract abesa. When the new development roads were being done, how many Sufray people were working? Tutan ufe disiltin sufuye. Nu pa jememe nekwi maso, piessu atkote. And when they're telling you, when they are telling you about, oh, yo pa vle Flabo twa tay. When I was in government between 2006 and 2011, you remember Hurricane Lenny? The waves had done a lot of damage to Sufray by Quellas and these areas there. I came there and I saw a white Ford on truck working with its SLP sticker and star on it. And I smiled and I turned and I walked away and I left the man there doing his work. That is the difference between the United Workers' Party and the Saint Lucia Labour Party. And some of you Flabos want us to behave like Labour, but Flabo can never be Labour. Flabo is a government for all of the people of Saint Lucia. And we need to understand that. Labour's have to it and Flabos have to it. And I am saying to us, under our Prime Minister Alan Shasney, we were creating sufficient work for everybody to get by in this country. Labour Party cannot create jobs, so what they do? So they kill the roads. What have they done with gas? They have put gas at $17, kosse bas driver. Kosse saki teka strike la, me jas muthe shime fosse jacla la, ek iplimo ve pa se lay Harold de la, hotte blala su strike, saki fe ta abesa. What happened? You see, that's why I tell you, the talk needs to be over. We need to be engaged in protest action. We cannot allow Labour to remain in office for the next three years. We have to force the hand to call the election. We are not advocating violence. We are not preaching violence. But we are not going to sit by and allow the price of gas to remain at $17 when in other islands around us that are less favorable economically than us, gas is $14. We have to force the hand of the government to bring the price of gas to the right level. And it's not an orange match we need, we need a yellow match. Let the Flabos make their voices heard throughout the length and breadth of Saint Lucia. That is what we need. And I believe the gas price is a good place to start. And Philippe J. Pierre, I know you're watching this broadcast tonight. Among the 900 people online, I know you are one of them. Over 1,000? I know you are there. I am telling you, you better start thinking of adjusting the price of gas. Misshime sufuye akai fe, uekome truck ek kwi ma, ki pakagapkal disakla, se mun sufuye, sa hotni budi abatsa. Si se Flabo ki de la, truckas tekala su strike. Equipment owners would go and strike. Now I believe that every piece of equipment that is owned by a Saint Lucian should be packed on that Sufray road. We have to match them. We have to match them and show them we have more equipment than what the train is brought into Saint Lucia. That is when we will know you are serious. Upa hadi me truck upakla, zebka levanta ya. Buetla kapui, ek otat truck nefpakla. Ek laja iua, saban lo nu sa. That is a grant given to Saint Lucia for the repairs of the road. Ek dead weight vanu. Dead weight sold us out on this project. Because no Saint Lucian contractor could qualify to tender on that contract. Now, da se lamwe fora. Si guy Joseph te in charge, set lisi eki kafe tawaisa. If UWP was the one handling that. But you see, you may tell me it started with UWP, but me do dead weight te havan nu. Te havan nu, it actually nu. He had killed us already. So I want you to understand what is at play. The soul of this country is being sold under us. Alan Chasney went into an arrangement. I want you to listen to me carefully. For about a hundred acres of land in Bosa Ju in Viewford, that was just a few cows and some ticks alone. That was on the land. You heard me? A few cows and some ticks. Alone that was on the land. Not generating one dollar for Saint Lucia. The single decision made by the political leader of the United Workers' Party, who was Prime Minister, brought more benefits. Over ten million, over twenty million dollars had been spent. And it was Saint Lucian, truckers, equipment, and different persons who are working there. All of this happened. And people were protesting. Where are the citizens for accountability? Where are the concerned citizens of Viewford? Hotteka match. Hotteka protest. Abesa tutba idu bukviewford anti war crime. The only thing that Labour has not stopped in Viewford is crime. Every piece of work that was going on in Viewford, they stopped it. What has happened? They killed it. Because that is how they want to operate. I want you to understand that. You are now hearing. And the boat owners in Soufre, I want you to listen to me. The taxi drivers who do the London sea tours, I want you to listen to me. When the ship anchors out there, komay okai pe wa trip from Lapuale hominbu. Ebe from Lapuala soufla. So, what the UWP was doing in developing Viewford port is that we would create a hub in Soufre and going down to Denry, so the whole country would be connected with tourism from the north to the south. What has Labour Party done? They put an X by Viewford. They killed it. We are here for forty years. They accused Alan Chasney of selling the patrimony of Saint Lucia. Now let me tell you something. If you don't control your seaports and you don't control your airports, what do you control in your country? What is it you are controlling? As a child growing to school, I was taught that the French and the British fought fourteen times. And one of the primary reasons for all of this was the importance of the deep water harbor that Saint Lucia had in Castries. Every government, when Sir John was Prime Minister, you can go and look at the Act of Slasper. You could not trade with these assets in Saint Lucia. That is why under UWP government, we said we were not going to lease our airport to anybody. How can, so you've now given the port Castries for thirty years and Port Soufre for thirty years. With a ten-year option to renew, which makes it forty years. You put an X by Viewford, you cannot do anything in Viewford. So you don't have port in Viewford. A foreigner is controlling. Ek me flama deo. Munna yofeti lebi la, esibla ebe esinwe. So you want to crucify my... Now, I don't have no problems with any white person. It is the Labour Party that have problems with white people. Be vicias yo vicias? Mati yoka mati? Se munnae mateni secret detlebi la, kiku le yo. What is the complexion of the people they have there boat? You remember prior to the election, there was a boat in Soufre? Who are the people on the boat? Now I don't practice discrimination. I don't believe in black and white, green or yellow. I believe the content of a man's heart is what determines who the man is. And I know the best man for Saint Lucia, with the best heart for the people of Saint Lucia today as leader, is Alan Michael Chasney. It is Philip JP that is selling Saint Lucia into slavery again. What did they do with the banana industry? As you heard from her, they killed it. Kidan ye for Batima boat Vincent, uh, Batima fig Vincent Lisi. I want to ask you, Saint Lucians, when was the last time a boat came to collect bananas in Saint Lucia? The last time that happened, UWP was in office. So sa wleme duwako. Se farmer de washla. It was Harold, along with the UWP government, that went and cleared the landslides after so many years that you could access your farms. And when Mr. Chasney said, "Pea pan ye, tut mun devle by blag." Talas, his fig hotka impu import Set Lisi. I told you, can you believe plantain is cheaper in New York and in Boston than it is in Saint Lucia today? Yo kwen banan, pli bo nache, New York. New York pa habla te banan. Why is that? Because Labour Party said, "Kill it." So when they don't have, what do you expect going to happen? Now I have five minutes, let me deal with Saint Jude. We told you the truth about Saint Jude, but you did not believe us. You did not believe us, you believed the Labour Party. Well, Tuesday in Parliament, you will hear the truth. How much money did they borrow for Saint Jude? Two hundred and one million. So, le nute di hot, sek milio, ebe dis milio, ebe sek kat milio ba ifini lobitalla. Hotke nu temati, ebe milliar abesa. Labour Party mati by hot. Alvarita Chemico, ek peti. Yo apere no, oh, five million dollars pu Chemico ek pressure wash. Yo po sa to Saint Jude. Usan ki la Saint Jude, yoka try to avaya sewa? The two new buildings that was being built by Alan Chasney under United Workers' Party, the dialysis and the physiotherapy building. Ek usan Philip JP, sir, hottelema. He's saying, "Well, you know certain parts of the hospital have approval, so we have started work." Ask him which part that have approval. The part that was being done by Alan Chasney under United Workers' Party. As I speak to you today, they have hired a consultant to do a drawing for Saint Jude. The old one. Now let me tell you something. You see us Flabos who had card of the VMS Labour. You see the propaganda of Labour. You see the rhetoric of Labour that must not be named among us. The only thing that UWP was doing was building a new Saint Jude. The hospital is Saint Jude and it's a new Saint Jude. Labour Party is building the old Saint Jude. They can use whatever phrase they want. Ma wepete phrase Labour. Ma wepete phrase Labour. Ek Labour sam sa yoka fa ausa. Se nu Flabo. And everything you all hear Labour Party talking about, hotni ya chatla, sa akasatule tli by sa. Well, if there's one thing we need to do, is kill it. When it come to your phone, once is Labour Party propaganda, kill it. Go and pass it on. So Labour Party told you a lie about Saint Jude. Bo ve Philip JP. You remember Kenny Anthony went to Parliament and he said he was borrowing forty-one million dollars for certain projects and for obligations to Rochamelle. He never told us what the obligations was to Rochamelle until two or three years later, when we had to go and pay a bill that the Ram Sahoy report said we were not owing. Kenny took the money of Saint Lucia. Ek si sangadiya pa wekenny potte plant konme. You took the money of Saint Lucia and you paid bills for your friends that we were not owing. Twelve million plus US dollars who I, who I pay by mun. Nu pa adwe? Guvemba pa adwe la, shompe la shangguvemba, ek who I pay? Now, did you hear Philip JP? He said the seventy-five million from the Saudis was for Saint Jude Hospital and the stadium. Now me wlema deo kwe sion. Si yo still kadro pla by Saint Jude? Ki maniai sa komela Saint Jude kaikos? Puyai beta alun pu Saint Jude? Ek eshi hadi nu, komela ja ki pu stadium la? Ek komela ja ki pu Saint Jude? Solana kokoma ka kandida by sa. But Philip JP, it's not Claudius you're talking to, you know. It's the Flabo Party you're talking to. So we are watching you and we are monitoring you. And when they go to Parliament, I want to hear. Because upa ipreti laja ku pa sa bugisa. Ki maniau sa ipreti laja asu apipwe? Es bangka by mun laja asu apipwe? Approximately. I tell you, we have an invisible Prime Minister. So in closing, we have an invisible Prime Minister. He is not tall and he is not short. So he has a problem with short people and he has a problem with tall people. Bogaboblemli. Guamun di ti hash kabat gobwa. So go hash siboze kabat gobwa. So, now I know what he was talking about. When he look at this man here we have as leader of the United Workers' Party, he have to look at him like that. Boy pe besa. He don't like to look up to the man. But that's the only leader Saint Lucia has today in Alan Michael Chasney and Philip JP. Whether you like it or not, look up to the man. Look up to Alan Michael Chasney. I thank you and good night.
Some things were meant to be, so just let it be. The United Workers' Party was meant to be the government of Saint Lucia. Let it be. Now, I just want to touch on one thing. Guy spoke towards the end about Saint Jude's. So, you know, whenever I hear, talk about the hospitals, I heard Harold talk about Super Hospital, I'm very concerned about my health. Now, when I look at the cost of healthcare, we have a government who said to us they are going to give us universal healthcare. So, I was listening very attentively because I am concerned about my health. They said they are going to give pregnant mothers free, free what do you mean? Ultrasound. But, because I give ultrasound, free ultrasound, apatwe? Apatwe, free ultrasound. Now, I remember when Ashanti sang about our growing population, it was said that we had about four thousand babies being born a year. Today, we have less than two thousand babies being born. So they are going to give free ultrasounds to less than two thousand people. And here the other arm of the universal healthcare. They are going to give free medication to people who are past eighty years. I want to remind you, the life expectancy, meaning the time you are expected to live as a Saint Lucian is about seventy-four years. So that means most of us will never qualify for that free healthcare because you will not live to see eighty. The next thing is, those who are lucky and live to see eighty, I challenge you, go to the hospital, go to the public clinic, go to the health center, la wive la ya ka du, no medicine. You have to go to the pharmacy, the public pharmacy, and go and buy the same medicine that they tell you that is for free. That is, that is the universal healthcare that the Saint Lucia Labour Party is giving you. But you know what hurts me? I remember looking forward to the plan that the United Workers' Party had for health. The United Workers' Party had a plan for universal, sorry, not universal, for health insurance. And when I listened carefully, I studied that plan very well. I was excited. Because irrespective of your age, every Saint Lucian would get coverage under that insurance plan. And that made a lot of sense to me. Because whether you are a baby, whether you are a child, whether you are adolescent, whether you are a young man, whether you are an old person, everybody gets sick at one point or another. So everybody was covered. And you know what excited me most? Let us assume you have a serious health condition. And you know operations are expensive. That coverage would give you up to seventy-five thousand dollars of health coverage. And we rejected that. We rejected that for a government that will give coverage to less than seven thousand people. And I say so because we have less than two thousand babies being born a year. I say so because we have about 1.5% of our male population living to see eighty and 1.9% of our female population living to see eighty. That will work out to together to be about five thousand people. Less than seven thousand people are getting coverage when the United Workers' Party would have given coverage to a hundred and eighty thousand people in this country. And so, so, we made a mistake. It is time to correct the mistake. Harold said to you, "Don't stay behind the scenes." Now, I have my way of understanding things. I understand that to mean, I understand that to mean, "Get off your behind and don't stay behind." Take a stand for your children. Take a stand for the future of your country. Take a stand to save Saint Lucia. We are going to make a difference the minute we bring the United Workers' Party back to government. Now, Guy said, "Philip Pierre have to look up to Alan Shasney." Now, you see the name thing? I not getting involved in that again. But I will say now I hate. Every time you say Alan Shasney, Philip J. Pierre. Anything that has to do with Alan Shasney, Philip J. Pierre. I do not know why. Once Alan Shasney appear in Parliament, Philip J... They go to court. Philip J. Pierre. Messie. Pappe. The man who will deliver us with the United Workers Party. The man who has proven and has shown us that he has a vision. The man who has a proven track record. As I've seen when I introduce. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we all make mistakes at some point in time. But we are lucky to get an opportunity to correct those mistakes. And I present to you the man that you are going to bring back as your Prime Minister, who is going to rescue Saint Lucia as of the trouble that is into it. I present to you the parliamentary representative from Micosaw, the leader of the opposition, your next Prime Minister, the honourable Alan... ... towards helping her restore home. So we're going to pass the hat. Those of you, we know things are rough, but give generously whatever you have. Make a contribution. A hat will be passed around. And while that is being done, our political leader will address you. Mama is Soufrer, mama is fa, for Saint Jacques. Es sou pa we? I want again to thank all the viewers who are listening to us live tonight. But before I begin my presentation, it's very important, it's very important that we appreciate... It's very important that we appreciate the support that's been given to us by different countries around the world. And tonight, it really is with a very heavy heart. As I was saying, as I was saying, it's very, very important to always remember the people that have helped us. And we must always be a very grateful nation. Over the weekend, a disaster that we would never wish upon anyone has happened in Morocco. And my understanding is over twenty-five hundred people so far have died in that earthquake. I say that because Morocco has been a very good country to Saint Lucia. You heard tonight, the fertilizer that has come for our farmers over the years. The scholarships that we've obtained and the number of Saint Lucians who are at universities in Morocco. And I can even say to you, at the UN and in many of our international relations, Morocco has been a very good friend to all of us. So before I begin my presentation tonight, I'd like if we can all stand for one minute of silence. Amen. I have to say that I am so touched and moved by the speakers that we've heard tonight. To see how the members of this party are maturing. And to see the passion that they still have for the development of our country. To Farah and to Herod and to Dominic and to Guy Spider. Amazing, amazing job tonight. And I'd love you to join in giving them all a round of applause. The chairman of Soufrer constituency branch that gave his welcome remarks, but also shared with us some very insightful facts. I want to change... I want to change maybe... I want to change if I can maybe the tone of our meeting. I understand when we say that we are in trouble that that really resonates with many people in this country. Because not only is the country in trouble, but you are in trouble. People have labeled me many things. And we talk about some of the propaganda that was spoken. About a young man who they labeled to you that I was a foreigner. That was somebody who they all could not relate to Saint Lucians. I don't share my life experiences a lot with people. Because as a person, I try to focus on the things I can change and just learn from the things that I've done in the past. And I've not shared with many of you my past. My grandmother and my grandfather. My grandfather was a civil servant. He eventually was a customs officer. He eventually became the controller of customs. And my grandparents had nine children. And it was very difficult for them to... It was very difficult for them to survive on one salary. And so my grandmother opened up a bakery. And they worked very hard. And they worked to make sure that their children could do better in life. And they were very fortunate. One of their children went off to MIT, the very famous university in Massachusetts, and became an engineer. And he actually came back to Saint Lucia and rose through the ranks in the Ministry of Works and actually became the chief engineer at one point. I have uncles who went to different universities. My father was the youngest boy. And by the time it came time for him to go to university, his father was very elderly. His father had left being a civil servant. And his father decided to build a little wooden boat. And they used to carry containers and come down to Soufrer and to Canaries and to Ancelay and to Viewfort. And my grandfather was struggling with the business. And so instead of being able to go to university, my father stayed to work on the ships. Want me to come closer? Is that better? Is that better? So my father stayed to work on the ships. Because my grandparents had to send money to the other children that were abroad. And my father ended up foregoing going to university. My mother was a young woman growing up in the country of Ireland. And it was very oppressive in Ireland. And she decided to leave Ireland at the age of sixteen. And she went to England to study nursing. And she was on her way to Canada as a nurse. And she studied with three Saint Lucian ladies who also were studying nursing. And they invited her to come to Saint Lucia before she went to Canada. And when she came to Saint Lucia, she saw my father across the street and fell in love with him. And she said, "I'm going to marry that man." And she did. My father decided that he was going to stay in the shipping business. And he expected that his father would have given him the two wooden boats that he was working on. But his mother was a very hard lady. And she said, "No, you have to pay for the boats." So he had to work and eventually he was able to... Because a man who was leasing the boats from him in Puerto Rico was not paying his bills. And I remember when my father went to Puerto Rico and he found out that in 1966 that he owed a half a million US dollars. And when he went to see the lawyer, the lawyer said to him, "My advice to you is to leave Puerto Rico just as quietly as you came in." And my father said, "No." And he moved all of us to Puerto Rico to pay off that debt and to try to make a better life for his children. So I left Saint Lucia when I was seven to live in Puerto Rico. That explains to you why I don't speak Creole. I speak Spanish. And I remember my father struggling in Puerto Rico. My mother became a secretary. And the hours that he worked and he put in, and eventually he became successful. And a lot of people believed my father has always been a wealthy man. He was not. He tells me the story, and many of you know these stories, where nine children have to be fed and you have one chicken to feed all nine children. And everybody's fighting for the little piece. And the chores that you had to do around the house, the eggs you had to go and get. Waking up at three o'clock in the morning to help your mother prepare the bakery to make bread early in the morning. My father never spoiled me. My father made me work for everything I had to do in life. When I was fifteen years old, my father said to me, "Who is going to pay for your university, young man?" I said, "You." He said, "No, no, no." He said, "If you want me to pay for your university, when you come home every single summer, every Christmas and every Easter, you have to work to save money on an airfare." I used to have to take a bus from Canada to New York City, downtown, and then take another bus to go to Kennedy Airport, to fly on Air France to go to Martinique and spend the night at the airport in Martinique to fly on a small plane over here the following day, to save money every single time. I say that because when I hear people tell me that I cannot appreciate what poor people are going through in this country, I did not have it as bad as many people do in Saint Lucia. But I know what it is to have parents who are struggling and they're trying to help their children and they do everything to put their children first. You go to people's homes and you sit in their house at their table and you talk to them and you hear their stories. And it's only somebody who does not have a heart that would not feel for those people. So this idea that I don't appreciate poverty, I want to dismiss that from everybody's minds. From everybody's minds. You can imagine, I had the opportunity as a young man who went to university, who got a master's degree, who's worked in Jamaica at Air Jamaica, who worked for the great Chris Blackwell, and had the opportunity to stay overseas and never come back to Saint Lucia to contribute anything to Saint Lucia. But as a young graduate, I came home to Saint Lucia and went to work for the government. Eight hundred dollars a month was my salary as an administrative cadet. I didn't start at the top. I started at the bottom. My roots in Soufrer, forget about my family, started when I was a young economist with a gentleman called Clem Bob, who had a vision for developing downtown Soufrer and who was upset that we could not get more money. And it was Clem Bob who came up with the idea of building the dock. And I worked with him with the OES to put together a master plan to develop downtown of Soufrer so that the people of Soufrer could benefit. He and I did not like the idea that tourists would just arrive and get on a bus and go up to the Sulphur Springs and come on a bus and go back to town and spend no time in Soufrer. We were not going to change the law and make that happen compulsory. We said we are going to develop the village of Soufrer. That is all the way back in 1984 when we started that. I worked in planning and as a young man, I played basketball. I played basketball in my high school team. We were undefeated. I was captain of that team. I played basketball at university in some of the best tournaments ever in Canada. I was captain of that team. I came back to Saint Lucia. And when I went to try out for the national team in Saint Lucia, you know what they told me? I want to tell you, it didn't start just now, you know? They told me to want any white men on the team. True. And they lost. And the next year, they invited me to come because my local team, the Lakers, we were winning. And every day for four years, I was down at the gardens from 3:30, 4 o'clock in the afternoon until the sun went down. And I remember getting into a fight with my teammates. There was a coach called Rigler King. And Rigler got upset with me because he said, "I want to be the coach of the team." I said, "Rigler, I don't want to be the coach." So I asked the players, I said, "Let me ask you all a question. Have you ever asked yourself why Alan Chastney comes to the gardens every day?" I'm twenty-four years of age. I had a little apartment. I lived up in Rodney Bay. I could go around. I think I'm a pretty good-looking guy. So I could be going to the hotels and checking out the gals and everything else? But no. I was in the gardens playing basketball with the guys. I said to them, "Did I ever try to pick up any of your sisters? So maybe I'm here spending the time because maybe I want to get a gal." I said, "Every time there was to go fundraising, I went to the Boulevard to sell T-shirts." And I remember this old lady passing by me and she looked at me. She goes, "A big white man like you should be ashamed of yourself. You here selling T-shirts in the Boulevard." I don't see myself as white people. I see myself as a St. Lucian. And a solution who is willing to do everything that anybody else is willing to do. I am not better than anybody else when it comes to that. When I worked on my father's ships, I carried cement. I went into the septic tank to clean the septic plant. I did my time and started from the bottom. That is why I have a great appreciation for the solutions for our city. But I had one sin in my life. One big, big sin in my life. And I need your help. My sin is, is that I believe in St. Lucian. And I believe in solutions. And I believe that with every time a solution is given an opportunity to compete on the world level, they can succeed. That's my sin. That is what drives me every single day. So when I hear these same people talk about that Alan Chastney is a prodigy of Canada. Okay, because I left to get a better education. I left to get a better exposure and I brought it back to St. Lucia. The same Julian Alfred that they will sit there and celebrate. She's not a prodigy of Jamaica because she had to leave St. Lucia to become a star. And I'm proud of what she's achieved. And I have no doubt that Julian Alfred will never forget where she came from and she will do everything to make St. Lucia a better place. To you here tonight that are in Soufere, you have gotten to know who Alan Chastney is. I didn't want an ordinary square in the heart of Soufere. I wanted the best. I wanted a square that everybody would feel proud of. And when I saw solutions coming from overseas and the first place they wanted to go to was to come and see the square in Soufere, I know we have succeeded. When we talked about fixing up the mini-stadium, the first thing that we did is we put the lights. And when we came back into government after five years, they had done nothing at the medium, at the mini-stadium. We went in now and put in a world-class football field with a world-class track with even better lights than we had before. And who has not stood in the stadium and looked out and saw the view of the Petons and go, "This is paradise in the world." And yet today, after two years and even the success that our athletes have had overseas, they still cannot certify the track and field tournament? So we can bring Julian Alfred to have a tournament in St. Lucia right here in Soufere? No. Herod told you, the people from New Development, government after government made promise after promise. And every time they got into government, they would tell you the same thing. "Oh, that was private property. We can't fix it." This United Workers Party with Herod Stanislas, we fixed the roads and the sidewalks for the people in New Development. We're the ones who wanted to convert the factory into a major shopping mall for all the artisans of Soufere can reason, Shwazel, that this would be the heart. I want you to think for a moment of the vision of what we were talking about. When you uplift the town of Soufere, it encourages now all the tourists to want to walk into Soufere. And when they see your playing field and they see your roads and your sidewalks, they go, "Wow." Look at the graveyard. We came and we fixed up the wall, painted up the wall. The one thing they have left to do is to redo all the gardening there to make it look like the most beautiful graveyard. Where we, the people who look at it will say that these are people who respect their family. Their last resting place. The dead people cannot do it for themselves. We must do it for them. We must be a country of pride. When we talked about village tourism, village tourism was to empower the people of St. Lucia. About creating an entity that would provide all of the accounting, all the marketing, help them with their designs, help them with their training. Government would put that money in for you all. And to make and beautify the village so when people are staying at a little villa or they're staying at an Airbnb, they can come down tonight and have dinner and they go, "This is paradise." The work that we did in Anstler Ray. And then now let's talk about Viewfort. In order for St. Lucia to make a quantum leap, we knew that Castries, Soufere and Viewfort had to go to another level. And we had to bring an international standard to Viewfort. So when you hear Labour Party telling you horses before hospitals, what does that mean? What does that mean? A gentleman, Tewa King, came to St. Lucia, put thirty million US dollars of his own money, because Labour Party told you that's not his money. Two years, they can't prove that to you. He didn't sell one passport. His money. All the young people that were working there at the horse racing track, they said it could never happen. We had the first horse race at the end of 2019. The whole world came to see St. Lucia's racetrack. The Caribbean was shaking in their boots and said, "I cannot believe what I've seen." That we wanted to put a home port in Viewfort. Why? That people now would be closer to Soufere. That we can develop the South, all the tours that we have in the South. Why you want to put more cruise ships into Castries? Use Castries for something else. Allow us to develop the South. Allow young people to stay in their rooms where they grew up and their parents and make a worthwhile living for themselves. And when I said to all of you, "What?" "Ching, ching, ching" in your pocket. What was that? That "ching, ching, ching" was your money. That's what I was saying. You don't have to wait for the government for a handout. You would own your own money. You can convert your own businesses and have your own businesses. Time and time again. We had a vision and we still have a vision for this country. When a government can tell you, "You cannot eat roads." I mean, stop for a moment and ask yourself, "What does that mean?" Really? You can't eat roads? Now, we can make a joke of it, but I can say, "Well, the roads are eating us." But the issue is, is that they're not replacing it with nothing. They don't have a plan to develop the country. They don't have a plan to put "ching, ching" in your pockets. Instead, they want to put a chain around your necks. And that chain is called "fair." That's what that chain is. It's fair. And the silence you hear around St. Lucia today despite how much suffering is taking place is the fear that people have to say anything. And when you have the doctrine of the Labour Party, it's what? Kill it. St. Jude's Hospital, kill it. HIA, kill it. Rodney Bay Road, healthcare in St. Lucia, education in St. Lucia, agriculture in St. Lucia. And why do they want to kill it? Because they want to make you dependent on them. But it's not taken too long for solutions to see for themselves that action speaks louder than words. Look what was taking place in our country. Look where we were going. And when a person can tell me, "Oh, I don't like to see what's taking place in Viewfort because Alan Chastney wants to make Viewfort into Miami." No, I wanted to make Viewfort as good as Miami. And instead of solutions paying their money to fly to Miami, I wanted the people from Miami to pay the flight to St. Lucia. That's what we want. Hundred dollars, US, fifteen hundred US dollars to fly to Miami? But the first thing they did when they got into government is to do what? They went to Miami. They even went to Dubai. How many people they took to Dubai? And yet, St. Lucia, who wanted to build islands in the ocean to make it more attractive and to make it more successful, we can't have Dubai here, but they get to travel and go to Dubai and you, the taxpayers, have to pay for it. What was pointed out tonight? I had a choice. My father had land on the beach and I can build a hotel on the beach. No. I built the hotel in Rodney Bay and we're the ones who came up with the idea Rodney Bay Village. To create opportunities for solutions to succeed because not everybody has a piece of property onto the beach. I put my money where my mouth was. I have learned to depend on myself. Take Deadweight. Other than being a messenger for a couple of years, his entire life has been what? Living off the taxpayers' money. He's never made a dollar by himself. It's you, the people, who put him there. And he wants to come and talk about that he's the patriot? You can't even finish a road at Millennium Heights. Are you, I mean, have you all driven on that road to see what's going on there? Who he wants to blame? As Guy said, there's no way on the United Workers Party that we would allow a Trinidadian firm to come to St. Lucia and do that work that solutions can do. No way. And if we had any pride in this country, we would all go up and line up on the streets and prevent them from moving their machines to come and do the work that solutions can do. But probably one of the saddest stories in St. Lucia is St. Jude's. The Labour Party criticized us, crucified us because we said it was going to cost over a hundred million dollars to finish the hospital. Remember that? And they said, "Oh, it's only going to cost ten million dollars in some chemical and some paint." Well, they've been in for two and a half years. Why have they not put in the paint and the chemical and moved in? Because they cannot. And so here it is, we spent a hundred and forty million dollars on building a world-class hospital building. And all it would take is fifty more million dollars and six months and we could move into the ground floor of that building. Ninety beds. They are now going to come to the house on Tuesday to borrow money from the Saudi Arabians to spend two hundred million dollars on a new, on a old but new hospital. How does that make any sense? How does that make sense? Airport with a world-class sea port. A world-class horse racing track. A world-class tourism destination was going into Viewfort. And they have killed it. That's what they've done. And exactly what Herod said. The victimization is not to give you healthcare. The victimization is to make you pay more taxes. The victimization is not to give you an education. The victimization is to make sure that the judicial system is not working. The victimization is not to fix the roads. I want you to think for a moment that if you were a taxi driver or a bus driver, you're now paying the highest gas prices you've ever paid. Plus seventeen dollars. I don't think we've ever paid seventeen dollars for gas. They're now putting a two and a half percent levy or tax on all of your spare parts, your tires, your shocks, everything. And even the car you bring in, two and a half percent tax. And now, the tourism is going down, so there's less traffic, so you have less business. And if that is not bad enough, they're not fixing up the roads. And our taxi drivers and our bus drivers are saying, "Nothing." Silence. And that is not the solutions that I know. The solutions I know would stand up for what is right. And there's no way what they are doing to the taxi drivers and to the farmers of this country could be right. And we need to let our voice be heard. But I think you've heard it tonight. Every single person here has said one thing. We are not scared in United Workers Party. We are going to fight for every single solution. We're going to do everything that we can to improve the lives of St. Lucia. Now, Philip Piers said that we in the United Workers Party go to bed and every morning when we wake up, we try to figure out what we can do to hurt St. Lucia. Right? I want to say to him that if I genuinely, or any one of us genuinely wanted to hurt St. Lucia, we would leave him there. Philip Piers and the Labour Party are the biggest disaster to take place in the history of St. Lucia. They have been like a hurricane. They have destroyed agriculture. They have destroyed tourism. They've destroyed the infrastructure in our country. They have increased the cost of living in our country. They have increased unemployment in St. Lucia. They've added on more taxes than any time that we've had in history. United Workers Party was bringing taxes down and the Labour Party is now bringing the taxes back up. There is more victimization than there's ever been before in our country. And we are now suffering under a doctrine called "Kill it." And we're now living in a country of fair. Instead of living in a country of hope and prosperity and a country of pride, a country in which we have a constitution where we are allowed to have freedom of expression, freedom of movement. Look what they're doing to the people in Soufere and in Viewfort. An ordinary police officer can stop you on the road and search you. An ordinary police officer can go into your house and search you. An ordinary police officer can stop your car and search you. An ordinary police officer can force you to stay in your house for seventy-two hours and we say nothing. We say nothing. I want you to know that despite the despair and despite what we see, that this country is in trouble, we're not here to celebrate. We are working to put together a plan that was even better than we had before. We will be announcing candidates that you will be all proud of. Candidates that are going to work together for one single goal, to make St. Lucia the best place to live, the best place to work and the best place to visit. y el mejor lugar para visitar. Pero como Harrod y Guy y Dominic y todos les dijeron esta noche, tenemos que estar de acuerdo que tenemos que cambiar. Y mi hijo me dijo, escribió un poema porque estaba siendo insultado en la escuela como un niño. Y el poema terminó con: "Siempre me perdonaré, pero nunca me olvidaré". La perdón es una gran virtud. Pero si te olvidas, significa que no has aprendido nada. Y lo que nunca debemos hacer es perdonar a aquellos que no sabían lo que estaban haciendo. Pero nunca olvidemos lo que el Partido Laboral está dispuesto a hacer para conquistar este país y de destruir este país. Nunca debemos olvidar y debemos mantener eso en nuestros corazones y dejemos de recuperar San Lucia tan pronto como podemos. preparemos para entrar en las calles. Preparemos para escuchar nuestras voces oídas. Levantémonos juntos. Tenemos que cuidar y colectivamente hacer que este sea un gran país. Gracias.